Call the August 9th meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors to order, and we ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay, first bit of business is a public hearing on Act 537, Facility Plan Special Study for Treatment Plant Improvements at UAJA. Amy?
This Act 537 Plan Special Study consists of a treatment plant improvement to replace the existing composting facility with an anaerobic digestion and sludge drying biosolids facility. The facility has operated the composting facility since 1993 and is comprised of 18 composting bays with a processing capacity of 52.5 wet tons of sludge daily. This composting facility is approximately 28 years old and has a considerable expense in upkeep and maintenance due to a required future expansion and staffing requirements. As part of the annual review of the facility and in collaboration with interested stakeholders, the UAJA is evaluating a change to their solids processing facility to ensure long-term growth capacity and to improve the facility's economic stability. The UAJA is considering the construction of an anaerobic digestion and sludge drying facility to produce a Class A biosolid product in place of composting. Act 537 Special Study amendments are coordinated with the Center Region Council of Governments. The special study identifies the need to replace existing composting facility with an anaerobic digestion facility at the Spring Creek Pollution Control Facility. The proposed upgrades totaling $18.9 million will be financed in the form of a bond issue. Customer user rates will not be impacted by this project. A 30-day public review and comment period began on June 10th, 2021, and concluded on July 10th, 2021.
What would comment? It's an exciting one.
Move we adjourn the public.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say the vote of saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. Okay, approval of minutes, we have two sets, May 24 and July 12th, and I understand one motion for both.
I would make that motion.
I'll second both of those, but I'm gonna make a comment on July 12th. Well, during our discussion of the ordinance that we passed 332, it came across to my, it came to my attention that I worried what my concerns were, and it implied that I didn't trust our planner, but our planner's doing a great job, and they have produced many good ordinance for us. This is another, this is a good ordinance. What I indicated is that I, along with, and I imagine, I don't know if my fellow board members did, but didn't read all the fine print and all nuances, that we didn't really understand what the parking, we built it for that, what would happen with the downtown parking. So, that was my intent, not that our planners couldn't be trusted, but I, I left it from now on, trust myself to make sure and familiar with all the ordinances.
Thank you. Ken, any other? All the table, that's the vote of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same side. Okay, citizen comment. Members of the public are invited to comment on any item, not on the agenda. Five minutes per person for eleven. Comments relating to specific items on the agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. Any non-agenda comment? I was hearing any. I have two. Over the span of the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk to some regular CNET Harris Township viewers, and interestingly, they both watched the premiere version of our planning commission on CNET, and thought it went very well. So, I thank the planning commission for doing a fine job on their first CNET, and they will be on a week from today for session number two. So, if you can't make the planning commission meeting, you can now watch us on CNET. So, the second one has to build a little bit on what Bud said with respect to some comments that were made last month regarding the parking issue to staff and planners. I want to apologize on behalf of the board for those comments to the planners and to staff. So, thank you. Okay, township business. West Penn Power update? So, you know, you can take the table there.
Yeah, so the table is for public comment, so you might wanna move, sir. There's some chairs right over there.
Public comment.
I'm gonna start by sort of asking you what we as residents should do or can do with respect to the outage problem, that you're recognizing you have a large geographic area to cover, all 110,000 of us in the center region plus, so it's a sensitive issue to all of us. So.
Understood. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Jolene Hyman, and I'm the Regional External Affairs Manager for West Penn Power. And I was asked by Amy to come down tonight and talk a little bit about the electricity in the township and some of the outages that you've experienced recently. So, what I thought I would do is just start first by talking about how you're fed generally as an overview from the different circuits, and then talk about our reliability programs, what we do on a continual basis, and then we'll talk about some of these outages that you saw the week of July 7th, when we had those impactful storms that came through, and then take a little bit of time to talk about the difference between an outage and a momentary, which are two different definitions. And then Amy and I decided as a takeaway, what we would do is develop kind of a resource sheet or an information sheet and make that available to residents, just to help you retain this information and kind of refer to in the future. So, we just started that document today going back and forth, so it's not done yet, and maybe with some comments tonight, we'll be able to add, you know, some things on there that people wanna learn about. So, with that, I thought I would just start by saying that Harris Township is fed electrically by three different circuits. There's, the one circuit comes out of the Shingle Town substation, comes down 45, kind of turns right on Main Street, goes to downtown Bollesburg, crosses 322, goes up the hill, goes over Mary Elizabeth, and then feeds the underground development across the street by the school. And that's called the windmill circuit, and that's the one that saw three outages the week of July 7th. I mean, outages and storms are not something new to us, and, you know, that particular week, we had thunderstorms and lightning storms, we had a wind burst that touched down, so we had a lot of damage. But what was unique is that the same set of customers on this circuit saw an outage three times in the same week. So, I'll talk a little bit about what happened with those. And then the rest of the township, we have two other circuits out of the Bollesburg sub, we call it. It's out early East Town Road, just past the Elks, it's on the right side, there's a substation there. Two circuits come out of there, one's called the Elk Circuit. It crosses over to 322 and basically serves towards Tate's Farm, you know, the ski slope, and then all, you know, all down 322 to downtown Bollesburg. It used to come up, and it does still come up, and feeds Liberty Hill, and then it used to continue from Liberty Hill into Kaywood, Willow Brook, and the Rocky Ridge Farm. But as that area grew and we kept seeing outages, what we did is we stopped it at Liberty Hill, and now we now feed that area from a different direction. And that's the third circuit. The third circuit that comes out of the Bollesburg sub, again, comes down, it used to be two phases, one out to Linden Hall to where you lived, and towards Potter's Center Hall, Potter Township, and, you know, down early East Town Road. Now, we extended, we built a third phase in the last year and a half, two years, and what we did is we took the load from the Willow Brook substation, as well as Kaywood, as well as Rocky Ridge subdivision in there, and we put all of that load onto that circuit. So, those are the three main circuits that feed Harris Township. So, what we do for our maintenance on a regular basis is a list of things. We do, first of all, we do infrared inspections every three years, and that's, you know, an infrared gun that we go and we just shoot our devices up in the air and see if they're hot, see if there's loose connections, and we try to tighten anything up, kind of some preventative looking to see what we have going on. We also do an overhead inspection on every circuit every six years. We physically go out and drive every circuit, get out and walk circuits, pole to pole to pole, and we're just looking up, looking for broken crossarms, looking for, you know, danger conditions that might cause outages. We do that every six years. We also do, for underground installations, what we do every six years as well, is we go to the transformer pads, we open them up, we look at them, we're shooting IR, we're just looking for any kind of issues that might impact an underground facility. And then every 12 years, we go out to every single pole in our territory, and we take a hammer, and we tap the pole, and we're looking for deterioration, just making sure that the pole's not being eaten by insects or, you know, and any kind of degradation. There's not, it didn't get hit by lightning, and it's cracked, or for whatever reason, and we do that every 12 years. And then every five years, we trim trees. Every tree, every circuit is trimmed every five years. So, we do within our right-of-way, you know, we can only trim out so far, and we have a right-of-way, you know, around our circuits. And that, so that's what we do for our maintenance. And then every circuit is also assigned a reliability measurement, basically. It's an index, and we look at three things. Every single circuit gets assigned a number, and we report these to the Public Utility Commission's on a regular basis. But we're looking at the duration of an outage, like how long was a customer out on this circuit. We're also looking at the frequency. Did you only were you out one time, or is it like, you know, several times in the course of a year? And then we're also looking at the number of customers that are impacted. So, those are the three indexes that we look at, and every circuit is assigned, you know, basically a report card, and what we do every year is we take the worst-performing circuits, and those are the ones that we're knocking off with our planned reliability projects, you know, knowing that storms are gonna come up and other issues are gonna be identified that we'll also be doing reliability on. But that's for our planned reliability. So, any questions with that before I get into the outages in Bollesburg? I feel like I'm talking really fast. Okay, I'll keep going.
Questions?
Questions. Okay, so I did pull some outage histories on all three of those circuits, but obviously the windmill circuit, the week of July 7th, saw three interruptions of services. And that circuit, the Bollesburg, I'm sorry, the windmill circuit has about 1,072 customers on it. And the first outage on July 7th was a six-hour and 13-minute outage, and that was caused by a tree up on, at the 500 block of West Main. So, right after 45, where we turned to come down West Main, there was a big tree up there that came down across all three phases and caused an outage. So, that was, that was the first outage. And then what we did, and depending on where an outage occurs, we do have some ability to backfeed, so we can pick up some customers, and in that outage, even though there was 1,043 customers that were out of power for that, we were able to stage restoration on, so that there was 171 customers that were out for four hours and 10 minutes, and then 872 stayed out for six hours and 13 minutes. And then we got rid of that tree condition, and there was another five customers at the very end of that, at a different area, down by South Academy Street during that same storm. It also brought down, storm, it brought down a wire as well on South Academy Street. So, there was another five customers in addition to all the rest of that circuit that stayed out for almost 21 hours until that was repaired. And then on 7/11, July 11th, very similar to the first one, we had a tree, which, again, these trees were off right-of-way. So, even though these circuits have been trimmed, these trees are outside of our right-of-way, so they came in during the storm, you know, went across the three phases, and it was almost in the same spot. It was down a little bit lower than 400 block of West Main Street. So, we had another tree condition, it was a tree that was off right-of-way, and we were able to get all of those customers on within three, well, three hours and 10 minutes is how long that outage occurred. And then as a residual of our storm, we had another incident on 7/13, right on the Bollesburg Pike, right at the Memorial Museum. And we have a big re-closure switch there, and the neutral wire kind of jiggled loose, and when that happened, the device started smoking. So, that triggered a fuse, and that was out of power. And that one was about two hours and 33 minutes until that was replaced. So, it just so happened that all three of those customers, set of customers, saw the same outage the same week. So, you know, understandably, customers were frustrated, asking questions, what's West Penn Power doing? So, again, these storms and these outages aren't uncommon, but it just happened that it was right over Bollesburg, it was on the same circuit, affected the same grouping of customers, you know, during the same week. So, those were the three big outages that occurred on the windmill circuit. I can talk a little bit about, so momentary outages, we differentiate outages, anything that's five minutes or longer is considered an outage. Anything less than five minutes, we don't have to report that as an outage to the Public Utility Committee, Commission, that's considered a momentary outage. And what we do with those, I talked about some of our preventative maintenance, but the other thing we do is we have these re-closures that are out on our lines, and basically, instead of a fuse sensing a fault, like if a branch hits it, and instead of a fuse opening and staying open until our line crews or dispatch and go out and try to find where the issue is, what we have is before that fuse opens up and stays open, we have these re-closures that are spaced out across the circuit, that what we say is if you sense a fault, open up and then try to close back in. And many, many times, what happens is the branch will hit and fall down, or a squirrel will get zapped, fall down, or it burned, or there's a car accident, you know, sometimes a car will just bump it. And what this re-closer is doing is it's trying to clear the fault, and then it, you know, closes back in. So, it'll open up, it closed back in to senses is there still a fault on there, and if there is, it'll open up again. Then it tries to close back in, and if it senses a fault, it'll open up, and like a third time, it'll say, okay, I'm gonna open up and stay open because there's something more than just a branch that's gonna hit and fall off, or just a momentary interruption. And then a fuse will open, and it'll stay open until our crews get there. So, I was walking in with Eric, and he said, Jolene, I have, you know, how many times I have to set my microwave? But that's, what that has done is actually prevented a full-blown outage, you know, with these re-closures, something hit it, and it cleared, and it came back on. So, we didn't have to send a crew. But, so what we do on the re-closures, we have them at the substation, we have them on our lines, and we go back and we take counts at regular intervals, like quarterly and yearly at these different re-closures, and we look to see how many times it's operating. So, if you're in a, if you're getting a lot of momentaries, and I know Denny a couple of years ago had this, he kept getting momentary after momentary after momentary. We looked at our counters, we're like, yep, it's clicking, clicking, clicking. So, now the hard part is we have to find what's causing it, and we have to do a lot of, you know, circuit inspections and looking at trees and, you know, see if there's animals that are being displaced because of a development that's going in, whatever it is that's causing it, and then we remediate it. And that's one of the things that happened with Liberty Hill, for example. They were seeing so many momentaries, and what we realized is that circuit from the Elks feeds, you know, that whole mountainside. So, there's a lot of trees up in there, and there's a lot of squirrels, a lot of animals, and we just started putting in animal guards, like everywhere. We just keep, you know, when we find where an animal's getting, making contact, we're putting animal guards up, you know, we're remediating everything we can to prevent those momentaries, and then eventually, you know, they stop, right? Like yours kind of stopped. Now, momentaries are a good thing. I mean, they're doing what they're designed to do. So, if you see a momentary once in a while or a couple of times, that's, that's fine, that's perfectly fine, but it's when it's repetitive over and over and over again, then we have to find what's causing that, and we certainly will fix it. You know, the hard part, I think, is just finding them. So, we work really hard, you know, with doing that with our customers. I'm trying to think, is there anything else? Okay.
Pole pounders were in Linden Hall this year.
The pole.
The pole pounders, checking the condition of the poles?
Yes.
They did the street.
They did them, okay.
They did all of Rush Valley Road this year.
Oh, that was, so that's the other thing I'm gonna talk about. So, tree trimming every five years. The other thing is, our tree trimmers come into the municipality, and they'll say, hey, we're gonna be working on this circuit, and these are the trees we're gonna be trimming. And, you know, I know you have a tree commission, but a lot of times, and we also make notifications to customers that are on that circuit, whether they have a tree or not, we notify that whole circuit. We say, hey, we're gonna have trimmers coming out, working on a circuit that you're fed from. So, everybody will get a notice saying that our tree trimmers are coming in. So, we really do try to work with the municipality, with the customers, and let them know when we're gonna be trimming trees, as well as planned outages. When we're doing some maintenance work, when we were building that third phase and we were switching customers over, sometimes, right now, we're replacing all the underground in Willow Brook as well. So, we have to have some planned outages from time to time to switch customers over. So, we always send an email to the township, and we'll say, hey, just so you know, Willow Brook's gonna be out for an hour or two, or whatever the situation is, you know, we try to inform the municipality where we're working, how long we're gonna be in there doing it.
I was just going to underground versus aerial lines, Joey.
Well, they.
Are new subdivisions getting underground?
So, our default, our standard is overhead. Everything we build is overhead, unless, you know, the developer requests underground, so that there is an added fee for going undergrounds. There's trenching and digging and so forth, but we'll do, we'll do either, whatever we're asked to do. But the standard is overhead for us unless we're asked otherwise. And speaking of that, this is hot off the press, I brought some Underground Electrical Developers' Guide with our standards for underground developments. These are available online as well. And then I brought some brochures on vegetation management, because even in your own backyard, there's, there's a lot of recommendations for what not to plant near power lines and what is, what is safe to plant near a power line. So, I thought I would just leave a couple of these, if anybody's interested in picking them up.
And the other document can be gotten by those going on the West Penn webpage?
This?
That one, yeah.
Both of these are available online, and actually, that's part of our resource page that we're putting together. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, with that windmill circuit situation, those customers down on South Academy Street, when they reported an outage, had they not called, had they assumed like the whole, you know, the whole circuit's out, I'm not gonna call, what happens is when we, when you call in an outage, we say, do you wanna call back from West Penn alerting you that this power's been restored? Yes or no? So, I highly encourage everybody to say yes, and every customer should call in their outage, even if they know their neighbor called, you should call as well for a couple of reasons. But in this case, this was a really good example. We fixed that tree condition on West Main, we put it all back in, we said, okay, the tree's gone. So, we started calling back our customers, you know, saying, is your power back on? Is your power back on? Yes or no? Yes or no? And had, and I think it was Fred and Barney Daly, had they not called in, we would have just packed up and gone home, right? So, they, but they had called in and they had said, hey, we know there's a wire down here. So, there was a secondary condition there. But when, what the callbacks do is if we call you and say, hey, is your power back on, and you say, no, it's still off, then we know there's a secondary condition on the same circuit. So, even though we fixed, you know, an issue here, there's a secondary condition downstream, so that alerts us that, hey, we have another problem that we need to send somebody out to look at.
And we had an outage, the callback came at 2:30 in the morning?
You ask for a callback, you're gonna get a callback. The other question we ask, that's interesting you say that, and this was more popular years ago. A lot of people complained that their power is out and they're late for work because their alarm clocks don't go off, right? So, we also ask, would you like a wake-up call? And if you say yes, we'll say, what time? And our IVR will call you back at that time, kind of like a hotel, you know, give me a wake-up call. But really, if you ask for a wake-up call, you wanna wake up calls, or not a wake-up call, I'm sorry, a call back when the problem's been fixed, it'll call you back.
I wanna, I think I'm correct, but you really do want people to call when they have an outage, because those calls help you triangulate the exact location of where the problem is.
Yes, we really do. It goes through a whole algorithm. The more calls we get, the more we're able to accurately predict the device that failed. So, you know, so if we get one call, we're gonna go right to that person's transformer, right? If we get two calls, and that one person's here and one's upstream, then we go, oh, it's up, it's up with this, you know, line fuse. up, it's up with this, you know, line fuse. And then if we get someone on up the line, so the more calls we get, and, you know, circuits are miles long, so we want to make sure we're sending that, the truck to the right location to, to get there and start working on the problem as soon as possible.
Don't call us, call her.
No, and do not call me, please. Eight-eight-eight-L-I-G-H-T-S-S. And I do, you know, I, I am not a call center, I am not staff to take calls. I work with all the municipalities, all the state and county officials in the emergency management, but I, I cannot take outage calls. I mean, there's, that's, there's a process. Now, when I do take calls, is when Amy says, hey, it's been ten hours, what's up with this ticket? You know, then I'll look into the ticket and find out some answers for her. So certainly, you know, call me. But the other thing is I wanted to mention, and it is on our resource page, is we have a 24/7 outage map that is real time. If you go on our website and go into the 24-hour outage map, you select Pennsylvania, you select West Penn Power, and there's little triangles. Like if we do it right now, you will see active outages that are going on there. And you can zoom in to county level, municipality level, you can zoom into your street. And those little triangles are going to be on the device that we are predicting is the outage. So even though you reported, maybe your transformer is down the street, and that's where that triangle's going to be. And as soon, and it'll, if you hover on it, it'll say, where's the crew at? They're dispatched, they're on scene, it'll tell you the estimated time of restoration and the cause, if we know the cause. And, and once that, that outage is restored, that little triangle disappears. And that's what our media uses all the time when they're reporting outage numbers in the TV and in the newspapers, they're going to that outage map and they're pulling those numbers right off of there.
I thought they were calling you. Questions of, Jolene?
Yeah, we have a question. You want to go up there?
Let's go to the microphone.
Sure.
I got a microphone up here, so. Got two of you, okay.
Sure, if you don't mind, we'll try to respect everybody's time, but we had a couple questions and, and comments. A bunch of us here live in the Fieldstone neighborhood, which is actually right over the line in, in College Township.
Oh, no.
I know. We're not even residents of Harris Township, but we know these outages have affected, you know, both townships. And what our experience has been, my name's Steve, this is Frank, is over the years that we've lived here, what we feel is an unacceptable number of outages, not just in, you know, with all due respect to West Penn Power, a busy storm week, but these continual power bumps that we have over time on perfectly sunny days, that can actually ruin equipment, you know, appliances and things like this. What we feel, briefly speaking, is that West Penn Power, we've been running up against a brick wall. And this is why we're filing complaints with the PUC and so forth. We were denied a reliability study from your company. You know, what we're asking for is instrumentation of our neighborhood and this grid, these circuits, to, you know, find out what the real story is. You know, we're told by your company, ma'am, that the outages we're experiencing are not unusual. We don't know that unless we have access to the numbers, or you provide the numbers to us. Frank and I have both lived in various parts of the country that are very difficult terrain for power companies, the Cascade foothills of Washington, Whidbey Island of Washington, routine seventy mile an hour winds, Central Valley of California, where it gets to be a hundred and fifteen degrees, or Hurricane Country in Tampa. We've never, us and our neighbors have experienced such poor service as this. And I guess our ask for you, ma'am, and for your company, would be to instrument our neighborhoods, to find out what's going on, to do more, more frequent upgrades. You know, we, we heard things like twelve years between some of these services. I didn't even have gray hair twelve years ago. Six years between certain kinds of services. A lot can happen in five or ten or twelve years. So I think a, a fair ask would be to more routinely do these checks and things like that.
Before coming to this area in 2009, I was a deputy base commander of one of only two master jet bases in the United States owned by the US Navy. Thirty thousand acres, roughly twenty-five thousand residents, sixteen hundred single-family homes, bunch of apartment complexes, and an airport that did a quarter million takeoffs and landings a year. Fairly familiar with power distribution issues, which, because that was also in the Central Valley, particularly wary of the heat impacts on those. And what I can tell you is, whether it was there, or Whidbey Island, as Steve mentioned, or a rural place called Dahlgren, Virginia, literally at the end of the power circuit, Pensacola, Florida, all of those places, I assure you, had high winds, had high, tall trees, had animals, and had gravity. We have not seen the momentaries at any of those locations that we have seen here. And I'm disappointed because I started working this issue back in 2009, and these momentaries are not to be trivialized. When a compressed circuit, when you have a, like a HVAC compressor or something that has fluid under high pressure, and you get a momentary outage and then that motor slams back on again, it's awful for the motor. Some of my residents just this year have had HVAC equipment replaced after these momentaries. And again, all I have to compare it against is what I've experienced at a number of different locations around the country that have all of the same factors and don't have these problems. And so what I would ask, again, Steve mentioned, we've asked for instrumentation of our neighborhood, it's denied. So I set up my own instrumentation. Do you know that our power has yet to touch, over the past week, has yet to touch a hundred and twenty volts? It routinely runs high, within half a volt of the upper limit as allowed for by the specs. The other thing is, three times in the last week, we've had one of these momentaries, or I've detected that my system has switched on to battery power. And that can come from a number of different reasons. It could come due to frequency being out of spec, but it can also come from these momentaries. And again, I'm harping on the momentaries because I've lived a number of different places. I have never seen that tolerated anywhere but here. And I just don't, frankly, don't understand it. And when I look around and I see trees in my neighborhood being trimmed by the township once every year to keep street signs clear, I'm asking myself, is seven years an adequate trimming schedule?
Five.
Or five? Okay, five. Is five years an adequate trimming schedule on something that's required for reliable service? I argue no. Questions I would be asking if I were on your, in your position is, we heard about their general schedules, when were these lines last trimmed?
Last year.
Okay. I would then ask a question about the adequacy of that work. Who approved it?
So I.
Who, who satisfied it? Who said that was good enough?
Let me, let me just speak to that. We're a shade tree USA community, which College Township is not. College Township does not have a shade tree commission, we do. And that's not a knock against our neighbors in College Township, obviously, but when they do tree work, there are standards that are set through the PUC and I think also through their governing organization, that we're not allowed to tell them they can trim differently. We've looked at the tree trimming standards, our shade tree commission, we concur with them. If there, we have some historic trees within the village here that are two hundred, three hundred years old, those are trees we'd like to be careful with. And they have been great. They, last year, they started, like in two, I think they started in 2019, and they come in, the guy would come in and say to me, Amy, these are the trees we're planning on doing. And I would look at them and go, okay, those are all not, you know, they're in the right way, but they're okay, they're not historic trees, they're not anything we're overly concerned about. They continued, as soon as they were able to continue during the lockdown phase of the pandemic in 2020, they continued their trimming. And we haven't had any complaints. And actually, after they did, when they did their flyovers after the storms, when we had all the damage, they called me, we have a nature preserve. And they said, Amy, we're going to take some trees down in the nature preserve. And we worked together, because the nature preserve is obviously a nature preserve, so we worked together to determine we could leave some of those trees as habitat, and we're actually going to do some more. Jolene and I talked about partnering together to do some more tree removals up through that preserve, because there's a line that runs up there. So from our standpoint, and the guys on our shade tree commission, the gentlemen, are extremely knowledgeable, and, you know, we do sit down and we do look at what they're going to do. And they do a lot more in talking with my colleagues across the state. There's a lot of other power companies that don't tell you. They just come in, they drop trees, they leave wood, they don't try to partner with you. And West Penn has been a good partner with us on the tree trimmings.
I understand that from the policy position of the shade trees, but that's got to be balanced against the reliability issues for the customers that are paying for this service.
This is a company that made, hopefully you all know this, ten point eight billion dollars last year in revenue. If it costs a couple of extra dollars to do some more frequent upgrades on equipment and tree trimming, perhaps you ought to consider that.
Yeah. So what I, what I would like to offer, are you, are you done?
I wasn't, but go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead and finish.
I'll let you, I'll let you respond.
Well, I was just going to make a closing statement, so if you.
Okay. The other question I ask is, again, if, if that work last year was adequate, then why did those trees come down this year?
Well, I.
Were they too big?
They were off right away.
Were they not trimmed far enough back? Do we need to investigate giving them a wider right-of-way so that they can trim trees off what is now off their right-of-way to improve the service? Again, all these people in here are paying for this service. And again, nowhere in the country have I seen momentaries like I see here. It's nothing to have them once a week.
One thing I, I didn't share is, after that storm, we went back over the circuit to look for tree issues. And you might have seen it, we had a news crew out there filming us, but we went back to the Elk Circuit, the earliest town in Windmill. And we, and this, this is typical after big storm events, we'll go back and look for tree conditions or anything else that might have shaken loose. And we ended up removing off-right-of-way trees. We removed nineteen off-right-of-way trees with permission from the homeowners, nineteen on the windmill circuit, six on the earliest town, and one on the Elk Circuit, off-right-of-way. So we were able to trim and remove a lot of the off-right-of-way trees. And that's, after a storm is a, is a good time for, to hit up homeowners and say, you sure you don't want me to trim that tree or take that tree down? Because they, they've just experienced long outages, they know these trees are off right-of-way, but they're impacting the circuit. So we, we were able to remove some with their permission.
What circuit, Jolie, have these gentlemen on?
Windmill.
Yeah, on the windmill.
How often do you update your, and upgrade your transformers and your lines themselves? Do you have that information?
Well, that, that depends on how loaded the transformers are, you know, how much growth is on them. But what I would offer, without getting into specific individual numbers, is that we do report our numbers regularly to the Public Utility Commissions. We're doing measurements and we're doing instrumentations on, on our facilities. If any customer has a continuing complaint or don't feel like we are pursuing reliability the way we should, you always have the right to file a PUC complaint, a complaint with the Public Utility Commission. At that point, that goes over to our legal department, our compliance department, and that stands between the Public Utility Commission, the customer, and our legal department. And at that point, it's out of the local people's hands. Well, they'll, they'll conduct an investigation, they'll look into individual complaints, they'll evaluate them, are we doing what we need to do, are we doing everything we can do to address these? And we will either, you know, be told by the utility to commission to do additional work or whatever we can to remediate, or we'll, they'll say, no, they're justified with what they've done, and they'll close the complaint. So at that point, you know, that's just an extra step that you can take beyond just, you know, trying to conduct your own studies. I mean, you do have the Public Utility Commission as a residential customer to, to pursue, you know, that. And it's free. I mean, legal representation is free for residents. I mean, we have to defend ourself as a company, saying that we're following our protocols.
Well, and I would also add with the Liberty Hill, I got an email from Karen Tranel today, which I forwarded on to you. Karen lives in Liberty Hill. Liberty Hill was having a lot of momentary outages between 2015 and it seems like it's they slowed down in 2017 or 18. But she worked closely with their engineer. She would call, she on, she kept a log. She had seventy momentary outages from 2015 through, I think, last month. That, and the majority of them were in 15 and 16, and then, of course, we'd had a bad microburst in 17, but there were some issues there. But she has at the top of her log, the number that she would call. She would call the engineer and report it, and it was investigated. And I think that's how you noticed the issues that you were having on that circuit, which is a different circuit.
Well, we, we knew we were having issues. And that, that, those were generated from that under, that bad underground in Willowbrook. And that was one of the reasons we built this, the third phase, and we're replacing a lot of that underground, and we moved them, you know, off of that Elk Circuit. So that stopped a lot of those momentaries. But yeah, I mean, those are the things that we, we can look at and work with our customers to remediate.
So is there a poss, I'm sorry, I also need you two gentlemen to identify yourselves for a record.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Frank Malott.
Okay.
Steve Creasy.
Thank you. Is there a possibility that we could connect these gentlemen perhaps offline, they could continue this conversation with you, and perhaps they could talk with the engineer as well at West Penn? I, I think maybe that would be productive.
Well, I guess the question I would ask is if their system is so good that they're sensing all these momentaries, why do we have people need to keep logs to get things fixed?
We don't, we take counts of the momentaries, and then, then that goes into the indexes as to how many momentaries operate.
So am I hearing that you may not capture them all?
We, yeah, we capture them.
You may not capture them all?
We capture all of them when, like on a quarterly basis, when we go out and take our readings off the counters.
So why did this resident have to keep a log for several years before it was fixed?
She, so what had happened back in 2012, and I believe I brought this up on Facebook to you gentlemen, we had had a spate of really bad momentary power outages. And so we had worked with the PUC, we had a meeting in this very room with the PUC and, and West Penn officials, first energy officials. And we had asked residents to let us know when they had momentary outages, and then I would make sure that that got reported back to West Penn, because they were making an effort to try to figure out what was going on. So that happened for a couple of years, and then, and it's funny, because I think if you've lived in Bollesburg for a certain amount of time, you can say, and I think I might be reaching that nexus where I've lived here a certain amount of time, where I can say the power, momentary outages have gotten way better. They were, when I first moved to town, way worse. And there was a lot of work that was done to get there. And I think that this woman in, this resident in Liberty Hill just started keeping the logs, because for a while, I still would get, anytime there's a momentary outage, I would get fifteen emails from folks just to let me know. And it was Saturday, it was a Sunday, it was Christmas Day, it was, you know, whenever. And I think she just kept that log just for her own, to see what was going on. And she was calling, like I said, at the top of her log, it says, call so-and-so at West Penn, and the number that she called, and then she noted that she reported it. And it's, it's dropped off significantly since it was.
So when there's an ongoing momentary issue, we're going out quarterly, getting the readings, when they might have multiple momentaries within that quarter. So like in Denny's case, his was happening very frequently, we worked with him, and we said, as soon as that happens, call us. Call us like the day it happens. And then what we can do is we can, we can go out and investigate it on that day and see what, what we found on our system that caused that momentary, and whether it was a tree slapping the branch or whatever. We know, you know, note the storm conditions, the wind conditions, and, you know, anything else that we might find out there. So when there's very frequent momentaries, we might work one-on-one with a customer, like the woman in Liberty Hill, and, you know, just try to, instead of waiting for the whole month and say, wow, there was thirty momentaries in that one month, call us every day, and it's the same customer, call us, and we'll.
Let's keep this moving, remember you two communicating with Jolene?
We'd love to connect with you and hopefully see this problem proved.
Yep, and.
Just have one question.
Yeah.
Make sure you identify yourselves, please.
We're going to cut this pretty soon, we can go long enough now.
Yeah, I'm Don Traum, and I'm a resident of Fieldstone. And is it possible to get a list of these maintenance procedures and when they were last done?
Yes, that's, that's the resource page we.
That's one of the things we're putting together. And we're going to put this information on the Harris Township website, so that when folks have questions about power outages, they'll be able to go over to that resource and, and look at the frequently asked questions, the maintenance information, the tree trimming, and the resources that she mentioned, also direct links to them.
Okay, I also took a ride and noticed some transformers that probably were overheated at some time. They're not supposed to be black. How often do you check for those?
Black does not indicate that they're not, they're degraded. We look at transformers, they last forty, fifty years. We look at their loading, make sure that they're properly loaded.
One of these colors, that's caused by heat, excessive heat.
It could be ionization or rust.
No, I'm in this business and I know what excessive heat looks like. And the ones I look at are caused by excessive heat.
Well, again, we're checking our devices with an infrared camera. We're looking at loading, so when it's ready to be changed, we change them.
Amy, have you come in?
I'm Dana Ever, and I'm his wife.
Oh.
And the transformer in Bollesburg, it wasn't just smoking, it was on fire. And we have a picture of that. And I just want to note that when we have kids that we need to feed and electricity is gone for hours at a time, and we get kicked off of our work meetings and we have no hot water, and that we might have to replace our devices such as microwaves or try to get our car out of the garage or have to replace the food that's in our refrigerator or any appliance that's plugged in. And especially if it's running, is vulnerable to this, like the washer, the dryer, the dishwasher, the water heater, the water sander, any device like a computer or an iPad or a phone. I think that we can do a lot better than this. And when you say that you don't report the momentaries, I think that they're really important, like the other gentleman said, and that we could lose a lot if we keep having these momentaries. And I did file with the PUC and I was dismissed today.
Let's keep this group together, right? We have to work with Jolene. And we're gonna move this on tonight, so. We got you on CNN now, so. Thank you, Jolene. Okay. Village District Parking Regulations, Amy or Mark or Todd or Amy?
Yeah, I'll start. At last month's board meeting, the board expressed a desire to change the parking regulations in the village district to what they were pre-2018, when use-based regulations were updated to be based upon square footage of the use where possible. The previous use-based parking calculations included both square footage and the number of employees, which can vary by use and occupant. The 2018 updates were intended to simplify parking calculations. Staff was directed to speak with the solicitor to find out how this could be accomplished. The solicitor advised that because the parking regulations are in the zoning ordinance, the township would have to follow the state's process for making an amendment to the zoning ordinance. That process involves drafting an ordinance and then running it through our planning commission and the Center Region Planning Commission. So staff, so that essentially makes it a two-month process. Staff put together, we did do a considerable amount of research in the interim after we had communicated this back to the supervisors. And we put together a memo that provided some history on the parking issues and outlined some potential steps forward. One of the things we did when we were talking about this item and we were looking at parking solutions, I looked to two communities. One was College Township because they have the Village of LeMont. And then I also looked to Elizabeth Town Borough, which is a community that I got my start in local government as. And they have a large central business district with a range of businesses and also apartments and other dwellings within their central business district. Both of these have shared use parking language where if you're a property that doesn't have enough space on your lot to provide the parking, if you have an agreement with another property owner in College Township, I believe it's within 500 feet of the property, you can then submit that to the township, have shared parking, and move some of your parking onto that lot. And both in, I don't know if College Township does, but in Elizabeth Town, they also have language that provides some relief from the parking regulations. So you can actually apply through the conditional use hearing process for a reduction in some of your parking regulations. So I thought those were two starting points because I think what we're hearing, and we did just do a change in use, I believe Todd can talk about that, in the village. And he was able to fit the parking on his site. So the use regulations worked for him. But we understand the Village of Bollesburg is such that a one-size-fits-all approach really doesn't work here. We have five properties in the, around the diamond that don't have any off-street parking and really will face a financial hardship if they try to change their use and there isn't a way for them to get some kind of relief, either through reduction in parking regulations or through shared parking. The other thing, so we think the board should discuss if there's merit in working on this language. And if you think there's merit, we can take this to the planning commission next week and have this conversation and keep this ball moving. The other thing that we've talked about internally at the staff level, I really think, after listening to what people have said last month and then also hearing from some residents in the interim, I think the board should consider establishing a citizens committee to study the long-term parking issues, right? We can do the interim, we provide some relief in the interim with the shared parking and the opportunity to relieve, to give pride, provide some relief on the parking regulations. But the long-term, I think, having a group of citizens sit down and talk about how they feel about parking, what they, and also not just business owners, but also residents, because I have heard from some residents who are really concerned that if all the parking regulations were to be relaxed, there'd be chaos with the on-street parking. And then they would have issues if they're having parties or they want to have guests over to their homes. And then lastly, I personally feel that the way forward on this issue is the establishment of some surface municipal parking lots within the village. We're gonna take down the pole shed behind the township building. We think we can probably get twelve to thirteen parking spaces back there. We think that if we could establish some other surface lots, Elizabeth Town has seven to eight. Now, it's a much bigger place than us, it's probably twice our size. But Elizabeth Town has about seven or eight surface parking lots within their business district. And when I worked there, we didn't have issues with parking with the businesses down there. We didn't have issues with uses that were changing. So there's a lot to consider. This is a lot of an issue to tackle. But I think that if we can get an interim solution now, that enables some of the property owners that do want to change hands, enables some of the property owners that want to do some different uses to move forward. And then we can work long-term on a solution. The planning commission is in the process of getting ready to update the official map. They're gonna talk about that next week. And we've talked about how we could identify future municipal surface parking lots on that map as well as part of this process. So anxious to hear your thoughts, and I know we have some residents here as well.
This is discussion only, no formal motion required, so. Colleagues? Then we're going on.
I'd like to hear what they said. I'd like to hear the public opinion.
Diane?
I'm not playing, speaking, but anyway, I'm sorry. Just real quickly, a question. When you take down that pole shed and you have your municipal lot, are you going to do, are you required to do additional screening? Because you are completely exposing a large part of the community to then a parking lot where, you know, a municipal parking lot, which is not exactly an attractive thing. So are there going to be, will there be fencing? Will there be shrubs? What will you do to soften that appearance?
So the preliminary, a very preliminary conversation I had with the engineer in our back parking lot was that we would like to see some attractive landscaping and perhaps a split rail fence or something that designates that that's our property because we do have a property next to us and we don't want to encroach. But yes, there would be some screening that we would do.
Okay. And the other thing, just real quickly, is just a reminder that, you know, this has always been the problem, we know it. We don't want to have, you know, rows of cars going across. And, you know, that's, we know where the issues are, you know along the alley. And people look right at that, that, those rows of cars. I mean, right now, well, never mind. Just, you know, something to be aware of the fact that there are people that are adjacent to it that are very much affected by it. That's all.
Interestingly, own...
I'm sorry, say it again.
We own a piece of property on the other side of the alley.
Are you, you're speaking about the row of cars I was referring to?
The grass lot.
The grass lot.
We own a grass.
We own that grass lot.
No, I'm not, no, no, no. I never mentioned the grass lot. What I'm talking about is when you take down the pole shed, you're going to have a, an exposed parking lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then, in addition to that, you're going to have a long Chambers Alley from where South Academy Street is to that municipal parking lot that it potentially can have cars all the way along there.
Are they so preliminary in terms of...
On private property though, right?
Yes, that's private property. Right. So just, I'm just asking you to be aware of how that is going to appear to the people that live adjacent to it.
Are they so preliminary in terms of...
It's very preliminary. What did Denny say?
It's a very, it's very preliminary.
Preliminary in terms of the design of the lot and what happens.
Right, exactly.
We got to the point of thinking your building down first, so.
Thank you very much.
Others? Going once? Creasy?
So... Okay.
I didn't get the memo either.
Will you stop whispering behind me? I'm not whispering. I don't really understand what we are actually looking at when we're not, when you do have businesses that can't possibly have any parking.
We have businesses behind the diamond.
Yes, I know exactly where they are.
Yeah, they don't have any parking.
But what exactly are we considering?
So one of the things that we, discussion point we've had is that if we were able to provide relief in some sort for them. So if they could share parking, if they could say to the fire hall, "I would like to work out an agreement that says, 'Can I share parking?'" and they could then meet their requirement by having the parking off-site. So then they, because right now, the businesses couldn't change their use because they don't have...
No, I completely understand that, but that's, I don't understand because that's not relieving them. That's not exactly the option that somebody who's going to visit a business wants, is necessarily parking over at the fire hall. So even though you're saying that you can ask this or you can, you know, "I'll share parking over here," what are we really doing? You're not shifting those cars to the fire hall. You know, they're gonna park at the closest spot they possibly can. So you're not exactly shifting. So what exactly are we accomplishing here?
Well, they also have employees that work at those businesses as well. So even getting their employees from parking on-street. We have residents that don't have any off-street parking in the village. We have a woman that goes to state college every time we declare a snow emergency because she has no off-street parking. So getting those folks to be able to park somewhere else so they're not completely on-street. And also, one of the things, and I like this about the College Township regulations, College Township actually looks at the kind of business that you're doing. Because not all businesses are created equal. Not everybody's working nine to five. Some people, like the dog groomer, they're a drop-off business. You drop off your dogs and you leave, right? So they just have employees to worry about. So trying to find something that gives some modicum of relief and also provides a little bit of an option for folks. Because I don't think right now, we have much of an option for those folks in particular.
Well, I guess what I'm kinda saying is it's fine and dandy and everything, but I don't think that just, I think we should be looking at it differently, I really do. I think that we should make, I don't think that there should be an agreement. I think that we should work as a village, saying that this business can't necessarily provide that. You know, maybe, I'll just say, maybe Pam's business can provide her employees to park behind. Maybe Debbie's business cannot. I don't really know. But I think we, I just think that telling them, "Now you have to contract with the fire department, or you have to do this with this, or you have to do this with that." You know, I just, I just kinda think that we should work more as a community in looking at these things, instead of dictating to a business now that has no parking and has never had parking, that now they have to find parking. And then what happens in the future when the fire department, something happens and then that parking happens to disappear? And now what do they do? So you're looking at a future now that this can happen. All this stuff has happened already. So now, I guess, I guess, my thought is, I just don't think it's, we should look at a whole community and not ask people to contract or I just think it's not really right.
So I hear you advocating for the citizens committee to look at that?
I would love. I'd love to be on the citizens committee. And I would like to look at that.
That's where I hear coming from.
Yes, I would really like to be on the citizens committee about this. Because I think it's very important.
Anyone else, before we go to the board? Beth?
I just have some questions about the, Rebecca Elman.
Thank you.
I have some questions about the interim, you know, solution for this parking. Because I've been looking at all these parking options for the past year, I've gone through all the options that I could possibly do. And some of them were doing adjacent parking at different properties. And none of them worked because of the regulations that are put in place. So how are those gonna change so that maybe I can do that? And also, if I can use municipality parking, how is that going to work? Am I renting it from you? How many can I rent? How is that gonna work with all different businesses trying to do that?
Right, so...
What is the options?
The thing, when I looked in Elizabeth Town and looked at their regulations, and again, I worked there in the nineties, that's why I'm familiar with them. When I looked at their regulations, they have specific regulations for their municipal surface parking lot. Like you can't park for more than seventy-two hours, which then speaks to the people that don't have off-street parking that are residents in the village. And they have regulations to make sure that people aren't sucking up all of the on-street, all of the off-street parking in those lots. So we would have to look at something like that. And again, that's a very long-term type of issue. And I also think that with the shared parking, right now, I think it's sixty-six feet unless we do, sixty-six feet. College Township, it's 500 feet. 500 feet may open something up for you that didn't exist before. And looking at the language and trying to sit down, and again, this was all very preliminary discussions that we've had, we are trying to find a solution. And we left this meeting last month, I think, pretty discouraged at the way that everybody thought we were trying to do something diabolical to the village, which is not our intent. So we were trying to think of solutions. And I think we'd have to sit down with some mapping to see where possible shared parking uses could be. And to Tracy's point, how that might be able to help villages, or villages, businesses within the village. So it's, again, it's all very, College Township's within 500 feet, I believe is their language. And then in Elizabeth Town, they have the conditional use hearing. And the nice thing that I like about the Elizabeth Town language is it's not arbitrary and capricious. It says, "You meet these requirements because you, and this is why you want to do it." And then it goes to the planning commission and then to their borough council for approval. And then you reevaluate it after a year or so to make sure it's still working.
Okay. All right.
It's, I have realized there's not a lot of solutions right now.
She kinda asked my question.
Yeah.
It was like, yeah, from the ground, just how it would be implemented or how you would manage, like, if you had, like, suppose you could use the fire hall, but then, let's suppose there's an event here that day. How would that be communicated then?
Yeah.
To, like, okay, so today you can't park there because they have a wave reception or something here. So like, how would that coordination occur? That was sort of my question.
One of the things that I looked at, and I think it was College Township perhaps, I read a lot, I fell down a parking rabbit hole and I stayed there for a couple of days. But one of the things I read was like churches are a good example of a place where you could share parking because a church doesn't typically have the same hours as a business, right? The church's hours are primarily Sundays and perhaps a little bit Saturday night. So that's, in some communities, they've encouraged churches to share parking with others. So I think there's ways to crack this nut. I think it's just, we can't go back because if we go back, and I explain this to you, if we go back to the four parking spaces, you still have to meet the use requirements. And we're denying zoning permits right and left, and I don't think that's the intent. So the intent is to try to find something that works for the interim so that we can put together a long-term plan. Because we don't really, I mean, we've talked about the village district for a long time, since the eighties, and we don't really have a long-term plan. And things have changed since we first crafted the village district.
At the end of this month, we'll have a bank parking lot empty.
I wouldn't have on that. It's gonna be four.
Thank you.
Hand the vet, the vet.
Vet? Vet savings? Oh, sure. I didn't say that before.
So my name's Doug Henry and I'm a resident. But I'm also an architect who's worked with several of the customers, clients, whatever, who's come into town and tried to establish businesses. So I know firsthand, right down to the nuts and bolts of where they failed and how. And my fear is that, you know, I think we need an approach here that really codifies this problem and sets the thresholds and doesn't leave every new business coming into town, coming in non-compliant in hopes that there will be an amicable solution that has not been, I mean, that's a... I can cite to you two projects. I mean, we just lost the pottery studio because just categorically, absolutely couldn't meet the requirements. And there was, there was no conversation. We couldn't even get a conversation started about how to solve the problem. So the problem, the concern that I have is things are much too arbitrary when it comes to how you're gonna solve them and who's gonna get the concession. So I think, whatever solution it is, I really think it ought to look back more broadly, not just to the last ordinance we adopted. Because I don't know, I mean, do any of us know whether that ordinance was achieving the goals that we want as a community? And I think we need to do a little bit of, step back a little bit and define, what's the nature of the problem so we know the extent of the solution? Because if we apply a solution that's too heavy-handed for the problem, and then we go back and we're always defending that, saying, "Well, we can't go back. We've already adopted that," but was that the right tool? You know, it's like, there's a lot of tools in the shed here we can choose to solve the problem. I think we'd better have a better sense of what do we want? What do we want for the community? Because I'm seeing residential, commercial properties that we've all known to be commercial properties. And with the new parking ordinance, I mean, I know one at least and probably three, two others that are likely, these are no longer going to be commercial properties the next time they change hands because they can't meet the codes. And I know this because I've done the survey work and I've calculated the square footages and I know what's not possible. And I think that we don't want to get into a situation where clients have to come to me, pay me $5,000 only to find out they have to leave town. Worse than that is somebody who doesn't know to hire a design professional and just buys the property, only to find out after purchase that they're going to convert that to a house or leave town in some fashion. And one other thing I would like to say is that, in conjunction with this new ordinance, I mean, it's not new, it's been around now for several years. But what is new is the ordinance that says, "We're also going to limit your impervious coverage on your lot." So you have these two competing requirements. You must put more parking on, but at the same time, we're going to limit how much parking you can put on. And that is, those two are things are just, you know, diametrically opposed. Need more parking to satisfy the zoning, but we're going to, at the same time, zoning's going to limit how much parking you can put. So, I mean, that's kind of a, that's a bit of a checkmate scenario. So we really need to look at, what's the intent of these two ordinances working together and the net effect that they have?
So I just want to bring one thing up, and it's because you touched on it, that's why I want to bring it up. Back when we did the small area plan, which we had, what, 16, 17 citizens on the small area plan, and they looked at what their vision was for the Bollesburg area, and that included the cultural district, that included all of the village district, and what's now the village commercial district. They actually talked about parking. And so I just want to note a couple of things that they said. Their, one of their goals was to preserve the character of the existing village while promoting the adaptive reuse of historic structures. They had a couple of action items. One, reduce the amount of off-street parking required for commercial uses within the village. Existing lot sizes and parking restrictions impede the adaptive reuse of structures for non-residential purposes, which I think we all agree. Two, revise zoning regulations to allow for additional off-street parking on properties within the village. Consider visual buffing requirements for large parking areas on properties within the village. Three, provide additional public parking on township-owned parcels. And this talks to, they specifically mentioned when the maintenance facility's built to use our parking area. Four, work with the local churches and the Bollesburg Fire Company to allow for off-street parking at their facilities. So I think the things we're talking about are things that we continue to talk about. And Todd and Mark are the experts on what we did in 2018 and why we did it. And I think it might be important if they speak to that, as to why we did do what we did historically.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I think it's unfortunate that we haven't spoken to it yet, since this is the second meeting we've talked about it. I do have to comment on something that Mr. Henry said. He said we can't even have a conversation about the regulations to figure out how potential businesses can locate in the village. And I had at least four conversations with the business owner that wanted to locate here. We talked about everything he wanted to talk about. And I had a separate conversation with you. So to say that we can't even have a conversation about the regulations and how people can achieve compliance with the regulations just isn't true. Those took place.
I know the client, the person we're both referring to, was ultimately looking for an audience with the supervisors. And it was very difficult, I think, to get, I think, to get to that point.
That's also false. The audience he wanted with the supervisors was he wanted the supervisors to waive something they don't have the legal authority to waive.
Well, yeah, we could argue about this, but I know that his goal was simply to find a way. He was so close to making something, what seemed like, you know, we could all argue whether it was positive or negative for a community, but, you know, it was a shop that would really, I think, would have really made the community of, you know, an asset, a true asset. And all he was looking for was a way to not have this parking regulation and this, you know, counteracting maximum coverage, you know, somebody to hear the case. And so, I mean, while we're talking about it, I think we just need to take into consideration what this, what the maximum lot coverage...
There's the opportunity of a regular meeting to come and talk to us. And in that case, apparently, it did not happen.
And he was advised of that. He was not interested in, we told him he could come, but the supervisors can't grant relief.
Right.
That goes to the zoning hearing board. The conversation, I was in two of the conversations, I think there were six total. Two of the conversations we had, we suggested, because the impervious coverage was a bit of an issue for him. And I said, "See how far you can get it down, and then there's options he could seek through the zoning hearing board. They can grant de minimis variances." We tried to provide outlets for him. And he had to make a business decision. I understand that.
Somebody, you know, the community citizens group to help sort of step in and, you know, help figure out what are the goals, and how can we achieve them? I think it's much needed because the regulations are just, they're... I mean, I understand that you can't put any structure, you know, any function in any building. They're not all appropriately cut out. But when a simple, general office building, I mean, there's places in town that really, once they sell, they won't be able to even put an office in there. And that's one of the most, you know, common uses you could put in any one of these commercial properties on the main street. So we've got issues that I think are going to change the complexion of our main street, unless we either agree that we want those changes. And if not, then all I'm suggesting is that we all understand what the effect is and do we really want to see commercial properties being changed back to residential. And I know that the property owners are not interested in that.
Well, I think it's interesting to note that this particular business owner that presented his case to us, I think, my recollection is that he was required to have six to eight parking spaces on the property. The property he was trying to put them on is exactly a quarter of an acre. The site plan that we just approved to change the use of a property in the village is smaller than that lot. It was required to have six spaces. They provided eight. So using the same regulations on a smaller lot that has almost the same identical lot dimensions, they were able to provide 33% more parking using those regulations than what the ordinance required. So what we've said in the past, and it's true now, is it isn't necessarily the size of the lot. In the case of the property that the business owner wanted to use, it is a quarter-acre lot with a large structure on it. That's just by design going to limit the area left for parking and what can be done on the property. The site plan that was approved was about 900 square feet smaller than that lot. But it had a smaller structure closer to the front of the lot. They could have provided lots more parking on that property if they wanted to, or if they'd have had to. So it's not necessarily, it's really hard to condemn an ordinance when you're basing your decisions on one property where something was proposed in theory. We now have a case where an actual application was submitted. We reviewed it, and the regulations work perfectly.
Well, there's plenty of them, Todd. I don't dispute that. But I tell you, I know that one. And I have done a brief study on several in the district, my own included, because any place I had access to lot size and roughly the footprint of the structure, I can calculate in five minutes what the parking requirement is. And I can also calculate what 40% maximum coverage is, or 50, or whatever the... I'm just saying, you have to agree, these two ordinance are working completely against each other. We want you to put more parking, but at the same time, what was acceptable at 70 is now 50. So it has a net effect, whether anybody intends it or not. I'm not suggesting anybody had an intention here, but this is what has happened. And I think we have to look back and see, is that what we, do we really want that, those two conflicting requirements, to basically, you know, close out properties that were, for 25 years, commercial properties relegated back to just residential?
Let's go back to the agenda then with respect to the two recommendations from staff with respect to the shared parking issue and the creation of the citizen committee. How does the board like to proceed on that?
Well, I'd like to comment that I like the short-term interim solutions. I think they're well worth investigating. There's something we can do without a lot of hoops to jump through. But in terms of the long-term solution, I am in favor of taking our time and getting it right. We had our, you know, we had our small area plan committee, put a lot of work into it, and a lot of opportunity for people to give them input. We had public hearings on the ordinance, and a lot of opportunity for people to give input onto that. Obviously, it did not work out as well as we hoped. Let's not rush into it again, be back here in three or four more years or saying, "God, you guys screwed up again." Let's take our time, figure out the best solution for the community. Second comment. The expectation that you can park directly in front of the business you want to visit is... I mean, I go down to the Borough State College, I don't get to park outside Dorizeno's all the time. Sometimes I have to walk a block or two, okay? I could probably use the walk. So the expectation that you can park right in front of the business you want to visit, let's put that one to bed. If we can provide adequate parking and you've got a three- or four-minute walk, I think that should be, that should be acceptable.
Alex?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, a couple of things. First, a question for staff. So the lot that's sort of across Main Street towards Bull Avenue from the Heritage Museum, there's an open gravel space.
Kelly's.
That's Kelly's, okay. I mean, I've seen a lot of people parking there. I don't know if there can be some arrangement there.
They go to Kelly's?
Well, I mean, Kelly's has plenty of parking right adjacent to their business. And I've seen that lot wide open, maybe a car or two here or there.
That's a private lot.
That's something to look at. 500 feet. How far is 500 feet? Does anybody have any idea, like, from the Diamond to Academy Street, what's the distance?
Football field and a half.
So 500 feet's pretty small. It's a short distance. I think, I think if we're going for something, maybe we ought to go a little farther than that because that doesn't even get you to the fire hall parking or the church parking from the Diamond. And, yeah, I agree with Bruce. I mean, it's like, no, you can't park in front of every business that you want to go to. When, I lived in the borough in the late 80s. And when I first, when I lived there, I couldn't park on my street. And I was on the 400 block of West Nittany, well out of town, because there were no parking regulations. Suddenly, there's parking regulations a few years later, resident permits, so people can, residents can park there, and there's not a parking problem anymore because you funnel the business parking to other lots. We need to look at these kind of things. We are growing. We are suffering growing pains. We can't just assume we can park anywhere. We don't have a parking problem in Harris Township, in the village of Bollesburg. No, we have a problem with people not wanting to walk a little bit to get to where they want to go. It's not that big of a deal. I'm looking forward to the poll shed coming down and municipal parking there, and I think we'll do a good job with that. I assure you that this board will not let just garbage parking lot appear in that place. It's not going to happen. We will do it right. So that is a good possibility. But, yeah, we need to take our time. We need to look at this. And we need to consider where we are and how we are growing and what people should be expected to do. But, again, you know, yeah, if you can't put a huge building on a quarter-acre lot, I think you can provide a lot of space. I understand that as well, so. But at the same time, maybe there's options to provide parking elsewhere for that business. But we can't just jump into it and say, "Yeah, go ahead and do it right now."
That's hard.
Yeah. You know, I've read this stuff, I've looked at it. You know, I've lived here since 1981. Bud's lived here a lot longer than me. But in those 40 years, I can't ever remember Bollesburg being parked full, except you take Memorial Day out, you take everything else out. People will park, they'll find a place to park. If they can't find a place to park, and I'll use Duffy's as an example, and they're driving down the street and they can't find a place to park and they really want to have a drink, they're going to go somewhere else. So I think we have got this new regulation, and as I read it, and even these new shared parking comments, I mean, you know, it sounds like it's a calculus equation, you know, how are we going to provide parking? I think we've got to simplify it. I don't know what we've got to do. We've had businesses in this area that can't provide on-street parking. When we did the ordinance on the impervious limits, we already knew when we passed that, that we had properties in the township, in the village, that were already over the limit. In fact, we were the worst offender. You know, our little building over here, what was it, 80, 90%, which we already knew that. So we knew that going into this. And I agree with Mr. Henry in the fact that we have an impervious ordinance and we have a parking ordinance that are just whacking into each other, you know? And I think that's what's causing the problem. I don't know why, in this village district, we know we've created, we created the village over in... by Denny's and Shingle Town, because we've identified that there's not a whole lot we can do there. We've made special areas. The village, we've always known, it's got its limitations on what we can do with it. I think we need to quit trying to put a round peg in a square hole. I think we need to go back, and I like the idea of having a committee go together, a citizens committee. And I'm not sure if we shouldn't have one of the five of us chair that committee, just to make sure we stay on the right track. But the bottom line is, I think we need to review this whole thing and quit making it very difficult for anybody to have parking or whatever. If you want to put a business in the village, we should be able to put a business. If you want to live there as a resident, you should be able to have a residency. And I'm sorry, I'd love to say we've got to have off-street parking for everybody, but I think it's physically impossible to have off-street parking everywhere in the village and with all the businesses. And yes, you know, I just, I think that, I think the businesses and the patrons coming to the business, they'll self-regulate parking. If you can't find parking, you're going to find another restaurant or another shop. And I think that as businesspeople, if they have room on their property and they can provide parking, if you're a businessperson, you say, "Well, I could get more customers if I had two parking spaces." You think you're not going to put them on if you have room to put them? Yes, you will. And so I really firmly believe that we need to go in that direction. What we do in the interim, how we get out of what we've put ourselves into, I think is what we really need to consider here. How do we, how do we get from here to when we can correct this? How do we, how do we deal with people that want to put businesses or things coming in now? That's what we've got to deal with. And whether legally and how we've got to do it, I think that's our challenge right now. This other stuff's going to need to get hashed out. And I agree with Bruce, let's do it right. But how do we do it in the interim? I think that's the big issue.
Bud?
There is no solution.
Thank you.
Period. Period. There is no solution. We talked about the 70s, 80s, 90s. We'll be sitting in the same conversation 2100. There's no solution. And we'll talk about it, we'll make ordinances, one ordinance will contract, another ordinance, this one's not contracted. This ordinance, there's no solution. My guess is that, when you talk about, first, I'm going to settle one speculation. I do not believe, at this point, that there's any parking available on the fire hall parking lot be able to say, "Okay, if you have a business, you can park people down here." I don't see that possible. There are certain things that can change down here that could happen. But right now, it's fireman's parking, it's rental parking, it's function parking. It's a lot of things, and we're also filling up the parking lot down here with other vehicles and other uses. So it's going to be tough to convince the fire company to say, "Well, let's put parking here, public parking." Things can change, and I know we can do it, but right now, that's not a solution. Kelly's parking lot, when he is open, it is full. And he doesn't have enough space for all of his customers. So that is not a solution. Now, if he were closed, if he were, when he's closed, he can park there. But that isn't a solution. So the Harris Museum has the same problem. There's no parking there. If we have functions, we say, "We'll park where you can," and people show up. So I'm just, I'm not making any speculations or anything. I'm just saying, there is no one solution. In my opinion, there's only one solution to save. Just take away all the parking restrictions. If you come to Bollesburg, you find a place to park that's legal, park here. If you want to start a business in Bollesburg, you better do your, you better do your due diligence. Is this business going to be dependent on a lot of parking? Am I going to put a drugstore in that is going to depend on thousands of cars, a hundred cars parked? You better do your due diligence in downtown Bollesburg. And I, and I am tied to downtown Bollesburg, basically. And one of the things that bothers me a little bit is that there's a little bit of a contention between business owners and residences. Residences would rather not have people come and park in their parking spot. And I can understand that. But when this was first brought up by Ruth Quarter, which is, nobody knows who she was, maybe. The vision was to make Bollesburg a neat little community, a walking little community, a place to come in, it's shops, restaurants, and it's there. We have a couple, we have two choices, it'd be just perfect business downtown. But we've got these ordinances, government commended, we screwed that up. So that, we're going to talk about it a lot. And we'll probably come up with some solution that will work for some, if it works for other people. So we'll find out. I have no predictions of what's going to happen. Everything I thought was kind of funny is, and I know I'm going to catch some flack on this, leave it to the government, come six pages of...
Six pages of...
Well, okay, we're working on it. We'll work on it. We'll try to make everybody happy. We'll try to at least make it so that everybody has a little bit of a satisfaction out of this, where you can park your cars. We're actually, we're kind of fortunate, we do have alleys. Very few towns, very communities don't have any alleys. You have no parking in the back of your house. Newer developments down in, especially down in Virginia, Charlottesville, Virginia, they're starting to realize that. They're building developments down here with alleys. So maybe we'll come around. I don't know. I don't, much to say more about it. But we'll still want to talk.
With respect to the two elements in the agenda with the staff's recommendation, there seems to be unanimous thought to proceed with the citizen committee? How do we wish to proceed with that? Interestingly, for you that are in history, these are the parking regulations from the 202 study in here, and there's some from the 1980s in there, so. I have some history sitting here. The membership of the last steering of the parking committee, the people listed in here. Sorry to say, I think three of those people have passed away. So we've had a lot of activity with citizens being involved in parking committees. How do we want to proceed with that recommendation? Amy?
If that's something you wish to do tonight, we can do what we did with the small area plan, which is we put out an all-call in the e-newsletter and on Facebook and asked for people to express an interest. And then we need to keep it...
Act it, raise their hand right now.
We'd also put it out to the greater public as well, but yes. But we, when we put that out, I think we had 25, we had 25 people on that committee. I don't know that we need 25 people on the parking committee. That was a little unwieldy. That was a little unwieldy, but you know, you didn't, an uneven number, so you can vote on things. But we can start with that and see what kind of response we get. I would say seven, eight, nine's probably a good number.
Okay.
Let's make it sure it cuts across various interests, business owners, residents. You know, so eateries and taverns, as well as shops.
How many shops are downtown?
And some businesses on 322, of course, there's Bayside. There's a difference between them.
But let's just make sure it's diverse.
Yeah. How many people would you like to put on, nine?
Nine, two, nine and 11.
Two. There's three, four, I'm up to four.
Hold the comfort chicken.
Five, up to five over there.
I heard Frank volunteer.
Frank wants to be the chair, that's what I heard. Doug, can you please go up to the, thanks?
One thing that we discovered in the, two of the projects was that, I think this is a very relevant point, is that in order to comply with the parking regs that we currently have, there is one way to actually, to do it, and that's to tear buildings or portions of them down. And that was one of the strategies that we actually looked at. I mean, it was a bit of a long shot, you know? You don't really want to move into town buying a property and then tear a portion of it down to meet your parking regs. But it should be noted that that is, that's a possible outcome. You know, when you have these two conflicting requirements, loss of historic content in our town is one possible relief from these two conflicting. So that's all I wanted to mention.
I have my argument with what they do that with, so.
Because I live on a street.
It's one that has been used in years, so, and it's within a block of downtown, so. And you know, you get into those, then you get into the purchase of the property.
Now, we have.
Negotiated sales kind of thing. And we have limits of what we can purchase versus appraised value. So there are issues that we need to deal with, we need to deal with that. Let's do the.
Are you okay with nine? That gets more.
I say nine or 11.
Say what you get for a week.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will put out an all-call.
Okay. What about the recommendation of the shared parking, parking reduction language? That's above that one in the agenda.
Well, let's flush that out into a formal proposal.
I would.
Right now, it's just referring to a few examples.
Right. I would say if you guys want to look at that a little further, let the planning commission talk about that, and then we can come back to it. Because again, it is, and I agree with Frank, whoever said it, is like calculus, the one. And it needs to be a little simplified. So that was just a starting point of an idea, so.
Okay, good, you got that one moving. Okay, proposed ordinance 348, rural zoning update. This one has a motion. If someone would like to make the motion to proceed with discussion, I would entertain that.
I want to direct staff to advertise the public hearing and possible adoption of proposed ordinance 348 September 13th.
I will second that.
Second that? Okay, we are open for discussion amongst us and the audience.
So maybe we would have Mark give an update on the CRPC, because they finished their review of the rural zoning, which was a piece of this.
Yes, the CRPC discussed this at both their June and August meetings. To be fair, the CRPC had looked at this several times over the past couple of years. So they didn't have too many comments, other than it was generally consistent. They did ask about a few things that they had questioned previously, and whether or not they had been included. But overall, the CRPC felt that this was consistent with the center region comprehensive plan and had a positive recommendation for the board to move forward with it. They did not provide any feedback, though. We did ask them if they had any particular feedback on the outstanding zoning map amendment request, and they had no specific feedback. They did ask a few questions, but they never actually gave a recommendation one way or the other.
So September 13th, a public hearing, and then possible adoption of the ordinance 348.
So I think one of the things we talked about last month, and the reason we tabled discussion on this to this month, was we don't want to get into a situation where we get to the public hearing and you go and change the draft map, the property that was proposed rural residential, you don't change that to ag, because then we would have to re-advertise. So I don't know if you want to get a sense of where you all stand on that now, or if you want to spin the wheel for September.
Well, there are limitations of what you can change without it being considered major.
The solicitor confirmed that if you were to change those properties from rural residential, as they're shown on the map now, to agricultural, you would have to re-advertise, and also.
Major change.
But it has to come up, it has to be what we approved originally. Okay, my question is, if we oppose that, that particular piece of property remains agriculture, and it presented to us as that part of the zoning map, then that's what it is, right? Am I right about this? I mean, I'm going to be very frank with you. We're getting beat up on this. Everybody wants to have my agriculture, except the zoning guys, except for the planters, except for, I don't get it. I just don't get it. What, do we want agriculture, or do we want RR? Let's decide right now.
All right, I'm going to sign in right away. That piece of property is not a very large ag parcel for the township. And it's located basically next to a golf course and a large development of large lots with a stormwater retention area that's adjacent to it, that's also should be included in the rural residential. So it seems that the planning commission, and anyone else has looked at this, has done their due diligence to realize that this is no longer really a seriously viable ag property. The rural residential allows it to continue to do agricultural activities. And basically, the only thing it doesn't allow it to do is agretainment, which is a new term to us regarding things like farms doing hayrides and other activities. Now, my concern with putting this back to ag. No, leaving it at ag, putting it back from the map that we have as proposed. So I'm going with that. The map has proposed that it is rural residential. So I'm going to go with that premise. Reverting it back to ag brings up some issues in my mind. First of all, the, yes, the opportunity for agretainment does not currently exist because of the way the lots are subdivided. However, if for some reason the landowners were able to consolidate the lot, then it would be eligible for agretainment. Well, if anybody here knows where the lane comes out under 322, you should really realize that that is a terrible idea, to have traffic in and out of there that's not familiar with that area, because there is a terrible short site distance. And you're just asking for an accident. I guarantee that if that went to ag and agretainment happened there, we would be looking at a fatality soon. Not if, we would be looking at a fatality, understanding what goes on in that corridor. So I am totally uncomfortable with the idea of even thinking about letting it go ag just for that possibility. But again, the other issue is, it's not a large ag lot. Sure, farm it if you want to keep farming it, but it's not going to be a business. It can't legitimately be a business for agretainment. It's just not an acceptable use in my mind. Thank you.
Sure, I'll rebut that. I don't think there's anywhere in the ag district that tells us that you have to do a certain amount of ag to be ag. There's nothing there, you're ag whether you grow one ear of corn or a billion ears of corn. I mean, there's nothing in that ordinance that says that. And as far as rural residential, and with them wanting to do the property across the street, rural residential, that somebody's going to apply for a road on that side. You're going to create the same issue with residents coming out there that you would have with ag businesses. There's nothing in the thing that said he can do it, doesn't mean he's going to do it. I mean, if we did that with every ag thing we did, I just keep coming back to the same issue all the time. And that is, that's an ag property now, it's always been an ag property. Why would we want to change it? Why change it to an ag property? As far as it being next to a golf course, we've got an ag property right down the street, right across the street from Elksview, right beside Bear Meadows, right in all those places that could have ag entertainment also, and ag business. All that could happen down there and increase that traffic also. So I'm not sure that I would agree with everything you said. I think that we've got to look at it. I would, I don't think I can vote to make it rural residential. I will vote for ag. I'm not changing my vote. That's what I'm voting for. That's what I want. I want that map to be ag in that area and ag across the street. Leave it what it is. Why change it?
I haven't asked for that decision. I mean, we're voting on whether we're going to do the.
The map.
Public hearing.
The issue is, before it comes to public hearing, we have to have this hashed out.
We have to hash this out.
Because what they present is what we have to vote on. We can't change it that night without going through more hoops. Okay.
Good. We sent it back to the planning commission and staff and said, please reexamine this. Look at it carefully. Explain to us the rationale and why it satisfied those criteria. I'm satisfied. Bud?
Well, let's answer Bruce's thing. It was, and here we go again. It was presented to the planning commission, but it was never presented why it would be good reason to make it ag. I don't ever, I watched those meetings, and I don't think ever was said, this is why we should keep it rural, this is why we should keep it ag. They had no, I talked to four members of the planning commission, and it was not asked a question of them at that point. Would you prefer it to be ag? Now, I don't know that they brought it up or somebody brought it up. That's beside the point. I, not my main reason for keeping it ag, the owner asked. It's the owner's property. He came to us and said, please keep it for agriculture. I want to keep it as agriculture. To me, that's, it's his property. It was ag when he bought it, it was ag when he looked at it, it's ag now. And I see no reason. Now, Nigel's right, it's a dangerous section of road down there. You have, you have your fence repaired, repaired mount and speed now. So that fence gets torn up. And we've had accidents from one end of that road to the other end. We've had a serious accident clear out the other end. As long as trucks are on that highway, it's a dangerous section of highway. Get the trucks off of there. That's my thing about that. But the owner wants to keep it as, it's been there, agriculture, it's historical. Just surprised me, I got an email today that the historical society of Center County is asking us to keep it at ag. And it makes sense. I don't see detrimental, anything detrimental, not keeping it as ag as a property owner wants it to be there. I see no, yes, it does fit the criteria of rural residential, fits the criteria of ag. I don't disagree with that. But to me, it does, I see no reason not to make that anything other than agriculture. The owner wants it. How many times has owners come to us, this board, property owners come to this board and say, you know, I think I'd like to change my housing development, where I'm making millions of dollars, I'm going to make it farming, so I can't make any money. It doesn't happen. It doesn't happen. And this is our last chance. Even though it's been pointed out, it's not exactly a large piece of land, it's our last chance to keep this in a township, a rural residential township, a rural township, a farming township. As I said before, we've lost eight farms since I've been around here to develop it, eight of them. We knew we were going to lose them. We knew we zoned for it, it's worked out well inside the growth boundary area. I think it's time to stop. But we want to be, we want to be a rural area. I just, I'm so committed to this area that I'd hate to see anything happen. We've got a growth boundary, it's an inside growth boundary, it's working well. Outside the growth boundary, we're going to develop, we're going to develop ways to develop that. Farmers can develop their land certain ways, it's going to work. But I just can't understand why if an owner of land comes down, not very often we say, I want to keep it as a farm. And that's sort of part of my plan, part of my sticking with, I will vote for ag. I know there's all, residential's like, there's pros and cons of highways and things like this, but they got to be worked out. Tate Farm, which is a good example, that is also a bad section. Right in front of his place, there's accidents there. Accidents have dropped down that area. The Pendant has done many, many hundred thousand dollars of work from Potter Mills to here, and it has, the accidents have gone down. But there's still people that cause accidents. And where you are, it's going to happen. So I'm, there it is. I guess I don't know what else I could say.
Is the highway that's coming in, is that going to relieve the congestion in that area?
They don't know where the road's going.
They don't know where it's going to enter?
No.
But anyway, you look at it, they can't fit that highway in that section, can they?
I don't know. That's, Frank's on that committee.
Right now, the alternatives, we're supposed to come out the end of July, but I think it's probably more like the end of August or September. But we should be seeing the alternatives here any week. And then we'll know a little better what they're looking at. But until that comes out, we really don't know.
So we really don't know an answer to that to begin with.
We don't know an answer to the traffic patterns to begin with.
The alternative are Tussie Mountain Ridge, Lionel Cat, or this one. Anywhere in that valley is open.
Well, we sent a letter some years ago.
Three.
Well, three years ago, whether it's going to hold water or not, that we wanted a say in how that road is being built. The township does. And part of township has said the same thing. I seriously doubt townships are going to get any word, any say in where that road's going to go. There's a fight between the Pounds Valley jurisdiction and us. So my opinion is, get the trucks off that road, send them to Interstate 80, and it would solve a lot of problems. 90% of any, anything that happens down here would solve that.
Yes. But they did the same thing, what was it, out the way, where the VW places the air-cooled engine is. It's now like a rural road.
You're talking about the gap, Potter Mills Gap?
Yep, going out that way. I thought they did a good job with that.
No. They may know, but they're telling us, and they're going to do an $8 million study, then they'll tell us what they want to do.
About 20.
They'll do a $20 million study, and they'll tell us what they already know.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I just don't.
Well, that highway is a different discussion we're going right now.
Saying this, but I just don't know if I could, I don't know.
Well, in my opinion, it's a different discussion. That road is a different discussion of what we're talking about right now.
Okay, I was just asking.
Okay, my thinking, I'm looking at May 26 memo from Mark with respect to the comparison of existing ag, proposed ag, proposed RR, and open space. And my thinking is, proposed RR, rural residential. Because the difference in yeses and nos, when you look at all of the variables, to me, swings it over to the rural residential.
Then, aren't you, well, nevermind.
Yeah, just one more point. The owners can farm it, that's not an issue. It still can be farmed. It can still be a farm, it can still be actually agricultural land. It will just be in a zoning district that's got a different, a few different things to it.
Does have a lot of.
You want to farm it, they want to farm it, that's fine. But I just, it just makes so much more sense to group it into the rural residential.
The nos are farm wineries, landscape contractor businesses, vet offices, they're boarding kettles, Mobile Home Park by Spencer, et cetera. The rest are comparative. Am I reading that right, Burke?
I've written so many memos on this project, I can't seem to find that particular one, but I'm looking for it right now. It sounds right, though, yes.
It was in yellow.
I don't have them colored.
The only thing I would question is, Mark said that when the Center Region Planning Commission was presented just recently with that map and asked the same questions, they had no comment either way. They had no, they didn't say one way or the other, which way that would go. They were neutral on it. So that told me a lot.
No opinion whatsoever.
Yep, so that tells me that they don't, they have no opinion. We could go either direction, and the Center Region Planning Commission, it's no different for them.
Boy, that's a people want to talk about it.
My name is Harvey Hamlin. I not only work, excuse me, I have a business in the township as the I-Doc, Diamond, but I live in Hunter Ridge Manor and have for 17 years. I've had the opportunity to sit in on two Zoom planning meetings. I've had the opportunity to sit in on two Zoom planning meetings and three supervisor meetings, commented at every single one of them.
We only did one planning commission on Zoom. On Zoom, okay.
On Zoom, on Zoom. Thank you very much. I think I'm right, Ben. Thank you. I've listened to Mark's presentation, his slide presentation twice, so I know that one by heart. And I find, in all due respect, Mr. Wilson, your comments are really presumptuous and your crystal ball must be amazing. I, I find people talking about this, Bud made the best point of all. When have you ever heard of a business owner, or landowner I should say, wanting to keep something as an agriculture or not develop it? It just doesn't happen these days. You may think it's a small property. I think the owner probably thinks it's a very adequate sized property. We've been told you can't change the consolidation after, and I'm trying to remember Mark and Todd, what you said. Was it 2003 or '04 when Mr. Kissel did that?
2001 is when it was originally subdivided.
Okay, and he was told it could no longer be changed. Is that correct?
That's what was on subdivision plan, yes.
That's what's on, okay. So subsequent to that, Mr. Yocum bought the property. Subsequent to that, I bought a property in Hunt Ridge Manor with the three acre land behind that, that is adjacent to, at that time, Mr. Yocum's property and at that time, the Elk's Country Club now Mountain View. In 2011, we changed the property lines on Mr. Yocum's. Obviously, it wasn't allowed, right? But it got through everything we had to do and filed in the courthouse. So that property usage, the lines have changed subsequent to 2003 without any issue. So whether the new owner, Mr. Emble, decides to consolidate that or not, either will be decided by this group or by the courts. Somebody will make that decision. I think what's really important is the sensitivity of this supervisor's group to what an owner would like. Everybody keeps talking about changing it to agriculture. No, it's currently agriculture. A proposed change is just a proposed change. And the work that you all have done for the last seven years is fine, but doesn't mean that everything that was done has to stay that way. The comments we've heard over the last number of meetings have been things like, well, you know, it makes sense on the map. It's a map. Maps can be changed. Let's talk about the reality of the property. I really believe you all, as supervisors who truly, hopefully believe that we need to keep as much of Harris Township as agriculture as we can save, have a responsibility to do so. And I think that when I see this and I see, you know, unfortunately, I've been in a lot of political situations and I do the counts. And so when I look at the five of you and I do the count, the question then becomes, what happens if you all decide tonight, on a three to two vote, which is what I'm hearing, that it stays as rural residential and then we go to a public hearing on September 13th, which honestly, I thought was tonight's public hearing, in all due respect. And at that public hearing, somebody wants to make a change. How does that happen at that point in time? So we understand, because I got to be honest with you. I have no axe to grind. I live next, I live right behind Mr. Emble, for Mike and Tara Emble, okay? I have no issue with that being a farm. I don't understand why we're doing this. It's illogical to me.
So I can answer your question about the public hearing. Last month, this was on the agenda to move this forward for the public hearing, which we had discussed in May, I think was the last time you gentlemen had been on our call. And the supervisor said, you know what, we want to wait and just make sure, because we wanted to hash out this issue, because the solicitor advised us that if we make a major change, and this is written in the code, if we make a major change to the ordinance after a public hearing, and changing the map would be a major change, because we would have to go back to make sure that the justification, the criteria that's in the ordinance itself, make sure that matches the mapping, right? Because that's what the planning commission had looked at. They had looked at both the language and the mapping. So if a change is proposed in September, and it's to, you know, keep the property agriculture and not change it to rural residential, and the supervisors agree with that, then we would have to re-advertise the public hearing once we'd send this back to the planning commission to get the language to concur with the supervisor's wishes. So that's sort of the process. And that's why we're doing this interim step tonight, because it's not overly expensive to advertise a public hearing, but if we don't have to do a public hearing twice, we do have some other folks in the township that want to use the language that's in the rural, in the rural zoning update, that has nothing to do with the mapping. We've heard from Mr. Songer a few times, he's ready to go with some of the conservation design stuff. So we want to try to move this along. We don't want to get caught up in this bureaucracy that we sometimes live in. So that's, that's the public hearing section of it.
My last comment, then I'll, and I'll stop. And that was, on the last Zoom planning meeting, I was on this supervisor Zoom when it sent it back to the planning commission. I expected honestly that the super, some supervisor would be on that planning Zoom to make sure that they discussed it the way that the supervisors wanted to discuss. I have to tell you, that didn't happen, because I was on both of them. And it was like a reiteration of exactly what they did before. And they didn't even talk a lot about, should that change, should it not change? What you did, Mark, was present the same slide presentation and go over it exactly again. So I'm not sure that the intent by the supervisors to send it back and to have it discussed in the manner you wanted it discussed ever occurred.
So when we sent it back to the planning commission, we sent the motion that the supervisors made verbatim from the tape.
Right.
We, we double checked that to make sure it went back the right way.
So in writing, they got it?
Yes.
But nobody was there?
Well, that, I made that comment too, that, that, and I had talked, I probably shouldn't have done this, but I did solicit members of the planning commission to have that in. And I would have to say three or four of them were, were not unhappy if we had kept it agriculture.
Hi, I'm Lucky Luciato with Byer Lansky over here. Actually, I'm Joe Bastardi. I'm glad some of you knew, knew that reference. I've met Mar, Mike and Tara down there. And the only thing I want to say, it's his property. He bought it under certain conditions. You can't pull the, it's just not right to pull the rug out from under his feet. As far as the accident thing, believe me, my wife and I watch what goes on on that road. And what I would suggest is that perhaps there's some kind of beefing up, up and down the road of warning signs, that something's going on. You know, hey, listen, there's a, there's a hidden turn over here, or whatever. But, you know, we're sensitive to the fact that people, that's why we live in Harris Township, all right? We don't live over on the other side, the way guys are planning things out. But if you want to change it, wait till he moves out. And as far as the other stuff that he has planned, all right, I'm sort of positive about that, because I love animals, I love that stuff of, you know, I moved here from Jersey, I'm like, oh, when's the first hayride I could go on, or something like that. So, you know, I haven't grown up out here all the time. You find things a difference and start cherishing things. And, you know, I was even thinking today that something like that could serve a very valuable tool for right down, you know, and I don't know what they want to do with the agribusiness, all right, or the agretainment. I found that novel in there. And how they'd have to move people in and out. They have a place where, I know Scott, that place right when you were there, there were gatherings over there. It's like a parking lot next to there, that big, that big farm area. But maybe you should see how it actually works out before we make predictions. I know that I, I've, I've made a life trying to make predictions and not all of them that I thought were going to be certain actually came out right. You know, some things can surprise you with that kind of thing. So maybe it's a positive thing. But before I go, I just want to say one other thing. We have, we have an area of housing development, a lot of kids living there. A lot of those kids look like they never even saw an animal before, a farm animal. I was sitting there even thinking today that it would be pretty cool if you had this, this, this agretainment center there with goats and all that stuff that they have. And these kids, somehow or the other, they worked out a deal where these kids could come over and maybe once in a while, visit that farm. But look, bottom line is this. We all, we're blessed in this country. We have still the ability to live as individuals. And if you, if you, if you develop something or you live something and it's your property and you're paying a stuff on it, should be able to do what you want with your property. As long as you're not hurting anybody next door. We live right next door. We have Harvey's old house, all right?
His old, his cast off.
I moved into that, I moved into that section of town and property values went straight down after that. But I, I thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
I have to go home because I have to get up and work. There's actually people with weather goggles on. Okay, folks.
Danny, I think there's one more gentleman.
I have one more.
I'm Mr. Emble. Nice to meet all of you. Thank you. Well, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for taking this issue on. Whatever happens, happens. No hard feelings. Happy to be in Harris Township. We love it here. I mean, it's a beautiful township. And we're excited to be at the Nittany Meadow Farm. So I just have a few things I'd like to say about this. And the first thing is, our request is to keep this Nittany Meadow Farm in agricultural zoning. It's not to change it. I think that's the important thing here that needs to be emphasized. Our intent is to keep this in the current zoning regulations. And I thought it was important for me to speak tonight to kind of give you a clear view of what those intentions were and our request for the farm. It seems that over the course of several months, and unfortunately, these have been Zoom meetings and we've not had the opportunity to meet each other. But our perspective's kind of been distorted on what we're looking at in doing with this farm. Again, we're not asking for a zoning change. We're merely asking to keep it in its current state. And we're trying to fully understand why certain individuals in the township are adamant about changing the zoning for this historic working farm. It just doesn't make sense. We've had many friends, family, fellow farmers in the area, professionals, and other visitors just drop in and see us since we purchased this farm. And many of them, if not almost all of them, see it as nothing more than a working farm. And they all say to us, wow, you should have a petting zoo here for children. These goats, we love them. Kids would love them. You should have, pick your own berries or pick your own pumpkins. And then we have to explain to them, well, currently, we can't do that, because there's a zoning change potentially going to happen. And they said, well, but it's already being done within the township, right across the street. That's already been done. If it's not allowed, if they can't, if they're allowed to do it, why can't you be allowed to do it? It's already agricultural zoning. I really don't even have an answer for that. Nittany Meadow Farm is not just a house and some acreage with a barn. It's more than lines on a map. It's a working now, currently, it's now a working goat, beef, and swine operation that we one day hope that our young son will take over and continue farming. That's our goal. Rural residential may allow for some traditional farming activity to continue, but it would severely limit the opportunity for this farm to embrace the new farming activities that other farms in the township will be permitted to do and have been currently doing for years on end. In fact, I think one time I spoke with Amy and she said the township provides traffic control for some of these farms that do this. It's not even in your regulation, but they're already doing it. In fact, farms today have an ever-growing operating cost. This is one way to offset that cost. You even did a study within your own township of your farmers. And those farmers told you that these extra activities are necessary for them to keep up with the increasing operating cost of an operating farm. And then we had these methodologies and presentations from Mark and they were wonderful. And so I, I actually emailed Amy and said, Amy, can you send me that methodology document? And she very kindly responded immediately to me and sent it to me, because I wanted to look at it specifically and see how this farm didn't fit into the agricultural zoning methodology. And what I found was that it does. It fits into the agricultural zoning methodology. And it seems as if, for some reason, there are several of this property's attributes that fall into this ag zoning methodology that are being completely ignored or discounted. Several of the attributes that this property has, it needs to be seriously considered with regard to that planning methodology are this. It has prime agricultural soils. I've never heard anybody talk about this in any of the meetings that I've attended. This farm has prime agricultural soils, including Hagerstown, Melvin, and the notable Noland soils. In addition, it has a DEP, Identified High Quality Stream. In fact, it has the headwaters to Spring Creek on this property. That's one of your methodology criteria. It has wetlands. It has flood plains. It also has historical designation that was identified in the 1982 Historic Resources of Center Region. That's the house itself. And then the barn was identified by the Pennsylvania Historic Barn and Foundation. Those are specific attributes of the planning methodology that were never discussed in any of the meetings that I attended. None of them. Clearly, this farm has many of the attributes identified in the rezoning methodology that make it a better candidate for agricultural zoning over any other designation. We've also heard about the spot zoning issue in several meetings. However, all the adjoining landowners that border this property and the ag zoning to the east have also requested their properties remain in ag. This isn't spot zoning nor political gerrymandering, as one of the commission members described it in one of the meetings we attended. In addition, we and Mr. Yocum, before we purchased it, made the offer to the township in many of the meetings to combine all the remaining tracts of this farm and keep it as an open agricultural space so that it can remain in ag zoning. We feel instead of objectively considering, considering this, we kept being told that the 20-year-old Kissel subdivision plan, which was never executed upon, states the properties can't be further subdivided. I would contend this notion most likely meant the subdivided lots couldn't be made into smaller lots, not rejoined. But if that was the case, I'm a little bit perplexed how it was then further subdivided. Mr. Hamlin just come up here a moment ago and told us how this property was further subdivided. So if it is in the plan that Kissel did 20 years ago, and that's your sole reason why you can't combine these lots, you've already done it. You've already subdivided that parcel. You've already set precedent. It's also been noticed in the township planning commission meetings, in a presentation of the county planning commission, that there would be no economic benefit to allow this property to stay in ag. This one completely goes against the township's own survey and methodology report that explicitly discussed the economic benefit for farmers to have the opportunity to diversify. Of course, this would only happen if the farm stays in its current zoning and all the parcels were able to be made whole again. We're trying to preserve open spaced land in Harris Township and keep it as a working farm. And I find it completely counterintuitive and discouraging that this would not be embraced by the township as a refreshing and wonderful thing, to have residents coming to the board requesting to save farmland instead of trying to develop it into housing on a few couple acre lots. The state of Pennsylvania currently has several initiatives that encourage the preservation of agricultural lands and family farms. In addition, one of our esteemed supervisors, Mr. Lord, with the help of Harris Township and Amy Farkas, wrote a wonderful research paper that was published in the Human Ecology Review titled Environmental Identity and Community Support for the Preservation of Open Space. That entire research article. That entire research article was about Harris Township and trying to keep farms in open space. I encourage you to go read it. So again, I respectfully request this historic Nittany Meadow Farm be allowed to remain in ag. And I thank you for the opportunity to provide my info as a resident.
Dennis, can I make one point of clarification? Couple references to the last couple of meetings we've talked about this refer to the later subdivision after 2003. The open-space lot was, the borders were altered. That was a mistake on Harris Township's part. We shouldn't have done that. Mark wasn't here at the time.
It's still public record.
Well, it is public record. I'm not making excuses because I was here, so I'll take the blame for that. But there is also considerable case law that says if you make a mistake, you're not compelled to repeat it.
I just wanted to say, on call, I want to thank Mr. Emble for putting that out. And if you all remember, I did send a little thing that I put together comparing methodologies on this to the supervisors and Mark and everything. And the one thing that I don't think he did point out, that when I did use the methodology on that same property for rural residential, I had a hard time getting all of them to fit. In fact, a couple of them didn't fit at all to that property for rural residential. So again, I will come back to, I don't, it's illogical to me.
Can I drag you on a little bit? Can I drag you on a little bit more? Just, I lost my train of thought. Well, it's getting emotional because we've fought so hard to preserve open space in Harris Township. Dan, you were headed up the thing with the farms for land preservation. I'm not sure what it was, agriculture. We worked hard to do that. We worked very hard to do that. We were successful in getting some land trusts and some ag preservation. So we do, we do have a history of trying to keep Harris Township or rural township a quality-of-life type thing. And that's basically what I'm going at. And I know the road is a problem, but that's going to be solved someday. So I just, I just, like he said, it just amazes me that we aren't trying to keep more land. I would vote to make more land agriculture if we could do that, but don't think we're going to be able to do that. Farming is a history, is our history, is Harris Township's background, Center of Pennsylvania's background, farming is. And we have a chance to preserve that farming. And I know it's a small area, but it's, to me, it would be a one move, one small step in keeping us in a nice little rural area. So I guess, I'll tell you what, I will move that we keep, how am I going to say this?
You already have a motion on the table.
We do have a motion?
You have a motion to set the public hearing.
And a possible adoption of 348.
But we have to decide before we go to public hearing.
Yeah, we're going to have to make a vote on whether we keep it ag.
Rural residential, so that's a separate vote.
So you can either amend the motion or you can withdraw that motion, do this motion first.
Well, that doesn't matter. No, I think we leave that motion because I would like to move that for the open here. But I think we need to have a separate motion on whether or not we keep it ag.
Well, we need to have a concurrence on this board, which we're going to go. So that when we go to the public hearing, that's what they're going to present, those lines.
Well, I think it's important to point out that if you decide to change the map that was presented and leave it as ag, you're likely not going to have a public hearing in September.
Yeah, we're going to have to work on it.
No, that's not true.
No, that's.
That's been talked about with our solicitor, and that's the way it has to be.
That's stupid.
That's the advice the solicitor gave us, that we need to go back and make sure that the language matches.
Well, I don't care. I don't care. If we have to do it, we have to do it.
My understanding is proposed ordinance 348 includes the map as was done by the Planning Commission and commented on by the Center Region Planning Commission also.
Well, I'm going to move that when we go to public hearing, the map is presented includes this area as being agriculture. I'll second that.
So that would be an amendment to your motion.
It could be. I don't care. I don't care as long as you decide which way.
Yeah, it has to be an amendment.
As a rule of order, that would be an amendment to the current motion.
That's fine. Okay.
So we have to vote on the amendment.
Call the question. Do we have a motion or a second on that?
Yes.
I second it.
All in favor of that motion, say if we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now we can go back to the public hearing, possible adoption on 348, September 13.
What was the vote?
That was two to three.
Since it's just a voice vote.
Yeah, it was two to three, so.
You heard three, you were two.
Yeah, so it was Supervisor Harden and Supervisor.
If you do this, it would hurt.
We don't do that here. Supervisor Harden and, thank you, Dr. Hanlon. Supervisor Harden and Supervisor Graham were in favor of the motion, and the remaining supervisors were against it.
Now we can proceed with the original motion for the public hearing and the possible adoption on September 13. Do you have a motion and a second on that? All in favor of that, say if we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have another little question here. Is this an interesting scenario here? It's interesting with Bedan's word. What happened? I'm going to give you an overall scenario and see if you can answer this question. Bennett Township, or College Township is rural, very rural, was farmland. What if all of a sudden the College Township Council says, "Okay, everything bound by Stalker Chevrolet, all the way in Stalker Chevrolet, is now going to be agriculture. Mr. Chevrolet, you have to leave." Can they do that? Can the township make?
They'd be grandfathered in.
Well, then why wouldn't this be grandfathered in?
He can still do ag on that property.
No, why wouldn't it be grandfathered in as agriculture?
He'll be able to do the same thing he can do now.
I'm not saying that.
He just won't be able to do the new things that are being added.
He would be considered a conforming use.
So we are taking a piece of property and telling you, we're forcing you to be against the law.
No.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not.
Well, if he wants to do agribusiness, he'll be against the law.
But he's not allowed to do that now. Under the current ordinance, he can't set up an agretainment.
I don't know what agribusiness is. I really don't. That's beyond me.
Let's push a shave.
I was just a stupid question.
We need to move on with the Blair Emick Lockland Minor Subdivision Plan. Todd, are you doing that one?
Yeah, but you never voted, you've never voted nays on that last motion.
Did we need the nays?
We did vote.
The public, on the, yeah.
Public hearing, we voted.
Public hearing, I thought it was five to nothing. That's what I wrote down.
Was it?
Yeah.
No, I think it was three. I heard of three yeses.
And I didn't hear a nays.
On the hearing, it was yes.
It was all yeses on the public hearing. I heard all, I heard, yeah, I heard, the only one I didn't hear was this one.
Well, the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion on this one, too. Agree with the motion, then we can do the discussion. Who wants to move a motion on the Blair Emick?
I'll approve the Blair Emick Lockland Minor Subdivision Plan contingent on satisfaction completion of the comments from the August 4, 2021 letter of the zoning officer.
Second. Okay, discussion. Fred, you have anything to say on this one?
Not really.
Bless him for hanging on.
My friend. Boys, have any discussion? I think interestingly, this, I looked at it today. One thing I didn't see on the parcel was, I think that triangular piece is being divided. What was part of the Lee family?
If one time.
Yeah, was the only.
Okay. Okay, I was sort of surprised it didn't appear somewhere out here.
Are you allowed to make a flag lot?
Under certain circumstances, yes.
But we're doing that twice here. Well, isn't that a flag, well, I don't have a problem with it. That's a good, I don't have a problem with it. Mr. Davis up there has got some, getting some land, but I don't know. It's kind of interesting. You're making two, what I thought would consider flag lots. I guess, I don't have a problem with it, but it seems kind of a strange way to do that.
I was also sort of surprised that the line between Davis and the 632 Main Street didn't proceed through, and they do four people.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened.
Four people got, the only three people benefited from this division, correct?
Well, because this person paid, this person paid, this person paid, this person didn't pay.
Fred?
Do you have a comment on that?
Sure, sure.
Well, this plan is, the three property owners there bought that whole property together. It was a piece of ground that was unusable between their property and the adjacent properties. It could not be built on in any way.
Yeah.
So they got together, the three of them, and bought the property and then decided to split up what was adjacent to them to add to their lots. So that's all that's really being done here.
But Mr. Davis isn't part of that.
Drew Davis.
Davis is on the corner.
Davis on the. No, no, he did not want to be part of that.
Okay.
And that's why you're getting that sort of funny shaped lot here, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of proceeding with that? Sign if we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Fred. How've you been? Okay, Resolution Updating 537. We have a motion included. Move the motion somewhere.
I move that Board approves Resolution 2120, approving the update to Act 537 Plan.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Corey, are you for this one by chance, or?
Poor Corey.
I have really nothing else to add other than what Amy had stated. I can say that the CRPA completely supports project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I'm glad to see it moving forward, so. Okay, all in favor of that? Sign if we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Cog Program Plan.
Okay, so let's have a small discussion. It's 9:45. We're turning into Ferguson Township.
That's good.
Or College Township. So. I'm not answering that. So what we did was we, I had emailed out my comments on the program plan, and then Denny and Frank were the only two that responded to me with their comments. And we sent you out one document, which you have in front of you with those comments.
That's the way one.
Yes. My suggestion, so this doesn't turn into Ferguson Township, is that, I'm not picking on them, but is that we go through these comments and see if you concur with them, and then any additional comments you have. And that way, we're not here for six hours on this item.
I'd like to make one general comment before we start.
Sure.
Because it covers a number of those items on there. And I'm concerned about the disposition of the current cog building or how we're going to move forward. And I see a number of things in here that are suggesting that we put some major investments into that property. And I'm kind of just a little bit concerned. Are we going to be spending a lot of money on a piece of property that we're going to be walking away from in six years? Is it going to increase the value of the property for us, or, you know, so that's just a general, as we talk about spending some significant investments on the property, I think we ought to be cognizant of where we might be six or seven years from now.
Where is that? Have you talked to that one in here?
No, it's a general comment.
It's a general comment. It covers a lot of items in there, so I just, other than that, I'm in general agreement with the comments that we provided.
Nigel and Bud then did not, did you provide input?
Well, I don't because I, I am going to be directed, how the board, when I go back to the finance meeting, finance committee meeting, I'll be directed to present the board's position. So that gets to what I want to process for tonight, yeah.
Now, HR has already been involved in this discussion, so what you have here has sort of got the nod of the HR committee.
That's like number 19, and moving down through a couple of 20. That's two HR kinds of things, that. Bruce is 26, the building capital is 26, and moves on through that. Eric, is there anything you want to tell us about where we are with this, or what do you expect from others?
I'd be happy to respond to specific questions or specific items, and otherwise I'll take some notes here. In response to Bruce's comment, I know the Facilities Committee is going to talk about the issue of the cog building and the lease at its next meeting. And we are cognizant of the concern that you raised. In fact, that's why the more expensive parking lot project was scaled back to more or less just resealing and restriping this summer rather than complete reconstruction. So the items that have been recommended, I think, are prudent and beneficial in the short term as well as the long term, not necessarily a waste of money in, given the investment. And to the first item on the list, as Nigel noted, the HR committee and also the Finance Committee have reviewed the need for these positions. And we think there's a lot of merit to it, maybe more than was evident in the text in the program plan. But we'd be happy to spend time discussing that further as we go through the process. If there are other questions, I'd be happy to.
I was glad to see the consistency in vehicle replacement, looking at the alternative hybrid possibilities, similar to the email I sent you today about the state grant for alternative fuels.
Right.
That appears here a couple times.
Alternative.
It didn't appear that much in the page 51, which is the replacement of the code vehicles. It didn't come across real strong. Up top of the two plug-in hybrids, but in terms of the rest of the replacements, coming down that 51 column, it really doesn't appear.
So all of the vehicles that are proposed for replacements are proposed to either be plug-in hybrids or fully electric vehicles. What we're dealing with is, with the manufacturer, is some of the backlog of manufacturing and that sort of thing. What the Facilities Committee and Finance Committee recommended for next year is doing charging stations for four vehicles as a pilot. And that's partially to Bruce's point as well. Do we want to put a lot of investment in charging infrastructure into the site, which may be a high-cost investment without a long-term benefit? And so for next year, we would propose to have four charging stations as a pilot. We're looking at the grant opportunities that you mentioned, Mr. Chair, and that we would then make an evaluation about further charging capacity in the future for 2022 or 23.
So I came across under page 58, number seven on the handout. It's library capital. Should we consider charging stations in the parking garage of the library? It didn't appear here on either one of these pages.
Could I comment?
Oh, sure, Fred.
Yeah.
We've talked about this, if you remember, in the Facilities Committee. And I was a very big proponent of saying, this is two different questions. Okay, the car, you know, to get the electric cars or hybrids, whatever they're going to get, and we're going to have to put charging stations in for whatever one we get, if it's an electric car, for our own use. But as far as charging station, is that something that we should be looking at long-term? Does cog want to be part of the infrastructure when people and citizens want to charge cars? Should we be putting them in? And the library fits into that, you know, cog? Should we be part of that, or should we let private enterprise do it? That's a discussion that the Facilities Committee is having on that, whether or not we should be involved in that infrastructure. What's that?
Are we going to make money off these charges?
Well, that's just it. You know, that's part of the discussion.
Well, typically, the gas stations be jumped up for a need.
Right.
If there's a need, then somebody's going to develop charging stations.
Right, exactly. And that's part of the discussion.
And I don't think that's exactly.
But as far as the charging stations, I think that's a separate thing. If we buy an electric car, we're going to have to put a charging station in to take care of that car. But do we want to go further? And I tried to get that removed, so that's an infrastructure talk. Does cog want to participate in the infrastructure? And that's a whole different discussion.
Should that be added as a general comment?
Sure.
Well, does that have to do with budget?
Or is that already happening there?
How does that have to do with this budget?
It doesn't. That's why I was bringing it up.
So it shouldn't be added as a comment, is what you're saying?
We don't want that. We want to know, we're looking at what affects the monies in this budget, not what theoretically we want to do down the road. That's a different discussion, a different area we're committed. What we'd like to see back is, okay, what is going to happen is, we're going to look at this budget as we do for the last 25 or 30 years. Okay, what's the increase? Does the increase make sense? Is it a 10% increase? If not, we look at this. It's a 3% increase. Is it a ten percent increase, if not, we look at this, it's a three percent increase, so maybe we can handle that, if it's six percent, why is it just us? So we're going to, all these things have to fit in there, we cannot take everything on this sheet right here, we cannot take every section.
And one of the things we're trying to do on the facilities committee, and you can see it in the parking rec, especially the pools, because we've gone pretty much over this with the pools, identifying how much money we need a year just to maintain.
Sure.
The pools, and that number's around two hundred grand, that's about the number, so the things you see on here are things that we put out in that committee that went to finance.
The bottom line is, you want to finance it, you pay me now, pay me later, or pay me in between?
I'm just telling you, that's what, we're trying to get all the facilities into that, so we don't have to have a big chunk one year, we're going to, we're going to spread it out, so we have a little bit each year, but I know the pools, we've done it, we've got pretty much through that, we know where we're at with the pools.
Well, the pools, pools are a little more different, they're a little bit self-sustaining.
They are some, to a point.
And at one point, we were paying money on our principal, we stopped that.
No, they're, to a point, to a point they are, but they still have monies that need.
Well, we've managed to put money in principal, but then all of a sudden, we set it up.
Like I said, we're trying to take all these buildings and all these assets, and get an idea what annually they need to be maintained, so we don't get a big bill and a big surprise, and that's what we're going to do.
Well, that's another thing's going to figure into what monies can be spent for discretionary items, too.
Yes, yes, that's being worked on.
Are there any items that we provided in here you have questions about?
Can I, can I bring up the communications manager thing?
Oh, sure.
Because I feel pretty strongly about this.
It's pretty soon, it's early, isn't it?
It's the Center Region Planning Agency, it's on page eight.
Eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So back when we started, I'm the volunteer public information officer for the Center Region Emergency Management Program, I stupidly volunteered for that in 2007, because I have a journalism degree from Penn State, which I'm happy to be in that service, but when we started that, Sean and I sat down, and we knew social media was sort of starting to come out, and we were like, we need to do something, we don't really understand it, though. So we went to Penn State, and we found an intern who we paid, who came in and set up the Twitter account for us, we'd had, we'd set up the handle, but she set up the Twitter account and got us followers, she got us stuff for Facebook and gave us a good plan. I don't believe the Center Region Planning Agency, because I see what they're putting out on Facebook, because they tag the township and I share those things, I don't believe what they need, and I talked to Pam Adams about this, I don't think what they need is a communications manager, I think they need, like we did with emergency management, they need someone who can come in, an intern from Penn State, and the students at Penn State are light-years ahead of me in the social media stuff, but have them come in, help them craft a communications plan, help them craft, you know, social media strategy, and then with all the tools, I mean, I do almost ninety-five percent of everything on my phone. Like for the township's social media, and I also run the Center Region Emergency Management's social media, and do press releases and other things, and Sean and I were working together when we had a snowstorm in 2009, getting out information, so I just think that instead of hiring somebody that you don't need, I think you could crack this nut a different way, and I would offer that, I'm also very happy to help, that's my bachelor's degrees in journalism, I was a journalist, so I'm very happy to help them if they want help, we have a Center Region communicators group that meets, we haven't met in a while, but we meet, and there's all people from the school district, the hospital, Penn State, that we could get them tapped into if they have a staff person, and that we could help them with that.
Let me turn to my question, are there questions you have about the observations that we made to date, or you, you're pretty good on those, Eric?
Well, I, I think we have been gathering a lot of good feedback, and some of the feedback from, that I've seen and read today from Harris Township is a little bit different from some of the others, and that's part of the process, is synthesizing and responding and addressing the concerns, so at this point, I'd, rather than get into debate, I'd just be happy to answer any questions, and then, then as we synthesize all of the feedback from the other municipalities along with this, one will be happy to provide.
I didn't see that as a debate as much as answering questions as to why some of these appeared.
Sure.
Okay, okay, Bruce, you okay, and Nigel, and, okay?
All right.
Okay.
I'll add that one comment and get this over to Eric.
Okay.
Do you have comments on the capital improvement plan? That's the other side of this that we almost never comment on. That's the one that was sent out to you with the general form agenda.
Oh.
There's a link.
Wasn't here, so I didn't.
I didn't go to the link.
I didn't look at that closely. I thumbs to it, very sketchy, so.
Most of the key items related to capital improvements were identified in the program plan, so I think, I think if you've read through the program plan and read through the comment guide, you probably hit most of the key things for the capital improvement.
I remember, I apologize, I didn't go through it.
Yeah, I didn't even see the link.
It would have been with your general form packet.
Okay.
You get it?
Okay.
I probably didn't.
Item G, the Liberty Hill snow removal.
So in 2020, the township contracted snow removal services for Liberty Hill to Scotts Landscaping, Scotts Landscaping is the contractor that provides the snow removal services to their HOA, so he's already doing their driveway sidewalks and the parking lot at the clubhouse. We made the move last year, if you remember, because we were short staffed through the winter months, we had an employee who was off on medical leave, township paid Scotts nine thousand five hundred dollars for snow removal, township crews provided the salting and the de-icing in the neighborhood, the arrangement worked very well, and we didn't have any complaints from the residents. Scotts reached out to see if we wanted to renew the contract for 2021, they quoted us a price of ten thousand one hundred dollars for the season. And while we're very appreciative of Scotts for their help last winter, we're in a much different situation this year, we do have one staff member, Scott Heimbach, who will be retiring at the end of this month, however, we've had forty-four applications for his job, and we're.
Forty-four people pick your job.
And we are going to be doing interviews, hopefully, next week, and while our, with our staff is at the full complement, the maintenance superintendent and myself both feel that we should resume the snow removal duties in Liberty Hill. Prior to last year, and this has worked very well for a couple of years, we worked closely with Scotts to coordinate our snow removal efforts with their work in the neighborhood, so that we're ensuring that the snow is getting taken care of, and the, you know, the residents aren't losing any service there, so we intend to continue this relationship in 2021 and beyond. We've not received any complaints about the township's snow removal efforts, if you remember, in 2017, I think it was, we had a pretty decent conversation with the residents, they were very concerned about that, in fact, residents have actually stopped, and they've thanked us for our efforts. So based on the response from our neighborhood, our working relationship with Scotts, we don't feel there's a compelling reason to contract this service out, we really think that this is a can of worms, we don't necessarily want to open unless we need to, right? Last year, we had to because we were short a person, and, you know, if we were short a person, or we had some kind of equipment staffing, yes, but we have an issue with taking taxpayer money to just service one neighborhood differently, because we think that opens the door to other neighborhoods asking for the same thing.
Money might be a good idea.
Is it a good idea?
Yeah, hell yeah.
Let's go down, see what happens.
Okay. Well, I don't have any problem with that, it's, right now, we can handle it, and it's a thing with the township, we want to be able to do our snow plowing, but it is a hassle for dotted, we'll have to call it, but right now, we have to be able to handle it now, if all of a sudden say, well, jeez, we have too many roads, we have to buy another, additional fire truck, additional snow pile, we have to hire an additional employee for a hundred thousand dollars a year, and another truck for a hundred thousand dollars a year, say, well, maybe we should outsource some of this plowing and get it done with. So, but for this year, she's right, I, for the life of me, I'm not quite sure why they want to go through the headache of trying to plow Liberty Hill, you have to coordinate, you have to do this, you don't have to, but if they want to do it, we're at the same staff we were before, it's not, in the long run, it's not like my kid did, but I think in the future, it's going to, we're either going to make a decision, are we going to buy another, lay out another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, or are we going to outsource it for ten thousand?
Tough to imagine it doing driveways, sidewalks, and roads.
They did them all last year.
All at the same time.
They, they, those big storms, Scott was up there all night.
Gates, Gates Estate stuff.
My, I only had a call, I agree, if our guys can do it, let them do it, but if, if, let's say we decided that we wanted Scotts to, we'd have to bid that, wouldn't we? We'd have to send that out for a bid.
No, that's under the bid limit.
What's that?
That's under the bid threshold.
Well, you want to bid on it?
No, I was just saying, I'm making that call.
Get your shovel up there.
No.
You okay?
I'm, I'm fine with keeping it in-house as long as we can, and it, last year was exceptional, and we, we actually lucked out.
Yeah, did we ever?
It was.
That's tested.
We did okay, but, you know, I think it's really our responsibility to do that ourselves, and you don't really find too many municipalities that contract out their snow removal.
We do, we do.
A few here or there, but I just, I don't think it's a good idea.
Mr. Lord?
We got the capacity, let's do it.
Okay. We don't have a national motion, you want by consensus up and yet?
The consensus is fine, and I'll let.
Seems to me that we're in favor of doing it.
I'll let Scotts know we're appreciative, but we're going to do it this year.
Okay, Engineering Services for Mary Elizabeth Street Emergency Culvert Repair Project, and I see the engineer just stuck in.
Yeah, he's actually not the engineer for this project, Mr. Franzen took this project.
This is the motion, this is the motion that we're going to discuss. Somebody give me that motion.
Okay, I got you, I will make the motion that we award Engineering Services to Mary Elizabeth Street Emergency Culvert Repair Project to Larson Design Group for a fee of thirty-five thousand design work, and eight thousand for bidding and construction services.
Second, I'll second. Okay, discussion?
One thing I just want to point out, and I know we've had this conversation, they're going to look at, in the proposal, they're going to look at both the interim repair and then the full repair, this, and Mr. Franzen asked me, he texted me during the meeting, and asked me to stress this, this is phase one of the ultimate replacement of the, and by replacing it, it's all going to be a slip-line substructure underneath the original bridge, we're not ripping that whole thing out and starting again, so putting the two hundred, ultimately, the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars toward this, we're not throwing two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars into Spring Creek, we're literally putting in part of it, and then, I had a very lengthy conversation with Tom Zilla and Ann Messner from the county about getting the funding, getting that number that will tell us what we need then to do the rest of it, so this is like phase one, and then, we'll hopefully get, and again, as I mentioned to you gentlemen, we're going to need to do some politicking to get this on the tip, but we get this on the tip, and then, the next phase of it would be the bulk of it, so we're not throwing money away, we're doing.
That was my welcome.
Yes.
And I think, didn't the county and that tell us that there may be some funds also available for this emergency for us also?
Yes, so the county, I talked with the county, and I apologize, I had to do this quickly because of their agenda deadlines, because we're going to be, the commissioners were meeting with Ann Messner on August 24th anyway, so we're doing two things, we had money that they gave us for the West Main Street culvert, which was forty-five thousand dollars, they're going to transfer that money, they're going to ask the commissioners to transfer that money to Mary Elizabeth Street, then we asked for another sixty thousand dollars out of the Act 13 funds, which is the gas money, and that's for structurally deficient bridges, and then, we can use ninety-eight thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan money for the rest of that project, so that gets the project completed. We have to have the project done by December 24th, or PennDOT will come in and shut the road down, and that is really not a Christmas present I want to give to anybody.
Where does the money come from for the West Main culvert replacement?
So the West Main culvert, I'm hearing through PSATs, that we actually can also use the American Rescue Plan money for culverts, if we can, we do have, I think it's thirty-five thousand dollars that we put in the budget, and then we had the forty-five, we have forty-five thousand dollars in our reserves, we could put towards it if we can't use the rescue money.
Is that forty-five thousand project, is that, is that what that would cost?
No, we'll get to that one, that's why Jerry's here, we'll get to that one in two items.
Okay, my only comment is, I don't know if it's common for the inspection group to be the company that wins the bid on doing.
Well, we did.
You said the four people, but I'm sort of interested, three didn't reply, and Larson is the only one that replied to the RFP.
That's correct, one, one replied and said they didn't have time, the other two did not reply, and then Larson replied, Larson's also doing the bridge replacement on Brush Valley Road, they have a lot of bridge, yeah, bridge work.
Okay, it was sort of a peculiar kind of bidding thing.
I like, I've called a couple of comments about that, yes, I know what the engineers say, but I talked to bridge inspectors, bridge inspectors, and down, down, and they were, PennDOT probably would not close that road down in December, it's a public safety issue, they probably wouldn't do that, plus, there's no weight limit on that bridge, they always put a weight, their policy is put a weight limit on it, see what happens, and then, but, but, so, I know we have to go and fix it, it's deficient, I'm sure it is, but to put us, think that they're putting us on a gun, we're going to close in December is probably unrealistic, that has not happened. The other issue is, I didn't, I thought we were going to have an, hire an engineer, or have an engineer win, and look at that whole thing, is this part of that program?
They're going to do that as part of the.
Okay, so we're going to get an engineering report on that whole bridge?
They're going to look at, yeah, whether we need, what we need to do to replace the whole bridge.
Okay, and then if it says, look, why we spend this money, we need the whole thing replaced, why we spend it now, will it tell us that, we're not going to think about that?
We're going to do the repairs, so that we don't get the road shut down.
Okay.
I live in fear of the road being shut.
We have a motion and a second to proceed with the award to Larson Design Group, all in favor, say if ever saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Same sign. Okay, Rocky Lane Paving Project.
I move to award contract 2107, Rocky Lane Paving Project to R.C. Bowman in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All three are pretty close, aren't they, in terms of total?
Yeah, everything seems to be pretty equal.
Motion and second, all in favor, say if ever saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay, West Main Street Culvert, item J, twenty-one point oh six.
So we bid this project out, this is, we included money in the budget to replace the culvert on West Main Street, forty-five thousand dollars of that, which I just mentioned, was that county liquid fuels grant that we're trying to transfer to the emergency repair on Mary Elizabeth, we opened the bids for the project, there were some significant concerns going into this, because this involves a pre-cast culvert structure, and a lot of the bidders, they had to identify where they were getting the structure from, and a lot of the people that had picked up bids were indicating they weren't going to be able to get a structure, but our low bidder came through, they were able to get the structure, so we would recommend that you award the project to the low bidder, John Clare Excavating, in the amount of eighty-six thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars. I would add that there will be about a ten-day period when the road will have to be closed while they put the new structure in, so there will be, folks will be impacted by that.
Boy.
Didn't they, I'm sorry, I'm coughing.
I was going to say, it's time of year somewhere.
Didn't they say October timeframe? Jerry's going to come up and talk.
Oh, Jerry.
My question, I'll ask my question, is, we just got forty-five thousand dollars for this project, we're going to do another one.
Where are we getting the forty-five to replace here?
So we can use the, ninety-nine percent positive, we can use the American Rescue Act funds, PSAT has said you can use those for a culvert, and we also have money in our reserves, so if we don't have the rescue money, we do have the forty-five thousand in our reserves. Yeah, depending, yeah.
Jerry?
As far as timeline goes, it'll probably be last two weeks of October, first two weeks of November, it'll be a ten-day period in that window.
Yeah, you're sort of visualizing what happens during a closed road, people coming this way, so.
They would, they would set up.
Yoder Preserve then goes, where's Yoder?
They would set up a detour to use forty-five around, and come back down South Avenue, Colab, and come back.
Is the Yoder Preserve before or after the bridge?
Right at, so the Yoder Preserve driveway is about fifty feet.
So it'll be, it'll be off limits.
Yeah.
It would be within the construction area, they're probably going to ask us for construction staging in that area.
Yeah, what's wrong with the culvert?
The current culvert?
Whatever it is, we call it a culvert.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a concrete box.
Yes.
And it's four feet wide by sixteen inches deep, and DEP is saying that it's a stream, according to their mapping.
It's a what?
A stream.
A stream.
That passes through there and runs down the edge of the road.
Oh, water sometimes runs down through there.
Not often.
So that's the issue there.
So our challenge is, we had to find something to match that geometry, and we can't use a pipe, because pipes would have to be set too low, and you have to have a certain amount of cover over a pipe, so you don't smash the top in, and we've gotten handcuffed, left, right, and which way we've gone, so.
It's too big to be called something else than a stream?
Well, we want it to be a drainage ditch, or just a drainage way, we don't want it to be a designated stream, I mean, there's, it's dry ninety-nine percent of the time, so.
Yeah, it was probably, that was probably installed about nineteen forty-something.
That would be my guess. Do we need to have a motion on that?
We need a motion and a second to pay for that, so John Clare Excavating, the amount of eighty-six thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second? Discussion? Are there any, all in favor, say if ever saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Proposal to State College Borough to assist in real estate tax collection, Amy?
So.
We have a motion, so let's do the motion, and do the discussion, someone want to move that?
I move the contract to State College Borough to provide tax collection and processing assistance and training for our new hire through the end of 2021.
Okay, I'll second that, okay, Amy, want to fill us in on any details?
Sure, so Bonnie left us last Friday, so with Bonnie's departure, we need assistance doing the processing of the real estate tax collection, and this is the need of our tax collection season, we're getting all the taxes for the school district in, and we also need someone who knows how to use the real estate tax collection system better than I, and Deb and I just don't do the processing side, to train our new hire, so the borough offered to provide tax collection and processing assistance and training to the new hire, they'll also give us a training manual, which will be great, the total cost is thirty-five hundred dollars, and then the training will be provided on an hourly rate, and Jackie, their tax collector, estimates eighty to one hundred and twenty hours of training. The total cost is thirty-five hundred dollars, and then the training will be provided on an hourly rate, and Jackie, their tax collector, estimates eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty hours of training at a cost of nineteen hundred to two-thousand eight-hundred and fifty dollars. We've had about twenty applications for the job. Deb and I went through them, she's gonna help me interview. We went through them today, and we're identifying candidates, and hopefully we'll be doing, probably next week, that's all we'll be doing, is interviewing people for these two positions. But, we have a good feeling about this job, and having the Borough's assistance will help us, because then we can onboard the person and focus on doing the batch reports, then focus on the fire company work, then focus on the tax, you know, the tax system.
And the per-hour rate, is that fairly close to what we're paying for the financial assistance with the Borough?
What do you mean?
Well, we get our financial reports from them.
We pay twenty thousand dollars a year to the Borough.
For that other service?
Yep.
Okay. So, it's in the ballpark, if you...
It is.
Okay.
The Borough's been very helpful to us. I am very appreciative of their help.
Okay, motion and second, we have it. All in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, appointment to plan commission, as a motion required, so...
I've moved to appoint Jackie Skeeter to the planning commission to a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and moved to appoint Sedalia Cornelio as alternate to the planning commission to a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Either one of these here tonight?
Yes, Sedalia was here.
She was sitting right there?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll second that one. Discussion?
I'll just comment that our, our decision to have alternates on the planning commission is working well for us.
Yes.
We have people, we have people that show up and be up to speed.
Can we do that in any of our other committees?
So, it's funny you mention that. We have a gentleman on our Shade Tree, he's not on our Shade Tree Commission, but he's on our Shade Tree Commission, Tim D'Amico. Tim lives out in Rocky Ridge. He's retired in the ag profession. He is the hardest-working non-member of the Shade Tree Commission that we have. He comes to every meeting. If I need a tree looked at, he's looking at the tree tomorrow, like, in an hour, he's getting me a report. So, I, I need to look. I don't think, the Shade Tree Commission's in the second-class township code. I don't think they allow for alternates, but I want to ask Pat, because, I mean, this gentleman has so much interest, and he says all the time, this is my favorite committee I'm on, and I'm not even really on it, so I'd like to find a way to get him.
Yeah, I like the idea.
When you, when somebody leaves, you got somebody right into the...
Advisor?
What's that?
Can we appoint an advisor?
Sure.
We can advise anyone.
Honorary member?
I don't know about honorary, but advisor maybe.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that, all in favor.
I'd like to make, I'll comment, it's, it's, I think it's very, very, says something for us that we are hiring people, we're appointing people who are smarter than almost everybody on this board.
Yes, Sedalia is really...
Probably a good thing, yeah.
I said almost, Bruce.
Oh.
Danny, you didn't write a paper like Bruce did.
I've written a lot, a lot of papers, so. You wouldn't understand that.
I avoided them like the...
Okay. You did vote on that one, don't we?
Yeah.
All in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. Spring Creek Watershed Commission?
I move we appoint Bob, I go to the Spring Creek Water, Spring Creek Watershed Commission to a term expiring December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I seconded it.
That's fine.
Does he know about?
Yes, he volunteered.
He volunteered for that. All in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Request to close Karen Street for a block party.
Isn't anybody here to ask for that?
They sent me an email. Don't discourage them.
The party was tonight.
I move to approve the closure of block Karen Street on August twenty-seventh from three-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM for a block party.
Are we invited?
No.
It's a public street. It's a public street.
I may want to go to the park that day.
Second.
Is, is...
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Okay. Is Karen, is it extended into the, into the Kwood North end, or is that just...
No, Karen was a cross...
They Karen Catherine, they go crossways, it's not very long.
Yeah.
But, but...
It only goes as far as Montclair.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there cul-de-sac on the far end?
There's a cul-de-sac on the far end, yeah, and then Ella borders it on the other end.
That's right.
All in favor of that, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Request to use fire police, uh...
You can go run, you can go run a five K. You can't go to the party, but you can run the five K.
Someone move that one.
Oh, I move that one.
What am I moving? Oh, approve the fire police?
Correct.
On September fourth from nine AM to eleven AM for the Labor Day five K race.
Second.
Labor Day five K race?
Yeah.
Is that in place of the Memorial Day five K race?
Sure.
This is, this is new events.
It's a group, yeah, it's a group from State College.
It's not, it's not, it's not the, it's not the one Memorial Day race?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Why they have to...
Trick or treat night.
Sure.
Move the scheduled trick or treat night for October thirty-first from six PM to eight PM, and set the rank date from, as November first for the same hours.
I'll second that one. Discussion? Now, there any, all in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Boarding delegate to PA Municipal League.
We need a delegate and an alternate for the summit.
Yeah, I'm, I plan on going. I didn't, who else is gonna go?
I'm, I'm going, 'cause I'm on the board.
I, I probably will go.
And I'm on the, what am I on?
You're on the legislative team.
You are? Legislative.
Hey, do we have to have a mast on?
I don't know.
Bruce has been, Bruce, Frank has been our rep, our delegate to the resolutions committee.
It takes about twenty minutes to do it.
Yeah, it does take much time.
I move to appoint Supervisor Harden as delegate and Supervisor Graham as alternate to the resolutions committee and annual business meeting.
Can't get up.
For the PA Municipal League's annual summit.
Am I like the third alternate?
I'll second that.
I have a second, I vote you in a second, discussion. Now, there any, all in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Managers report.
Okay, so in the interest of time, I have just one thing. The Little German Band, who one of the members actually lives on Pine Tree Avenue, they would like to propose that they would have a concert at Blue Spring Park from seven to eight-thirty PM on September second. I think they want the township to go ahead and get the permit for them through Center Region, 'cause we don't have to pay, and then we just give them a certificate of liability. So, as long as you're okay with that, I will move forward with doing that.
They have to get...
No, I just got an email about it.
Wait a minute, no, they have to...
The Little German Band is gonna do a concert at Blue Spring Park?
Down here.
On September second?
What day is that?
From seven to eight-thirty PM. Well, let's look.
Seven, huh?
That's an away game.
No, yeah, it is an away game. It's a Thursday, so it's no game.
Oh, it's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, the Little German Band.
So, and he said in his email, he's like, nothing is needed from the township, like, money-wise, except for perhaps some announcement publicity in the e-newsletter, and the audience will need to bring their own chairs or blankets. They've done this in Lock Haven.
Do they need permission from us to do that, or Center Region?
No, they, they need to go to Center Region, but I told him, 'cause I think this is a great idea, and I told him, I said, I can ask you guys if you're amenable to being the ones that apply for the permit for the pavilion, 'cause then nobody gets charged a fee, and we just give them a certificate.
Otherwise, otherwise it's twenty dollars.
How's he gonna say, can't be much, right?
It's not much, but...
Twenty bucks?
Yeah.
Okay, whatever.
That's fine.
Okay.
Anybody concerned about Little German Band playing in town? Okay. You have a, go on and play.
Okay, and then I'll answer any questions that you have about my manager's report.
Okay. I had, I had a question on the first item with, uh...
Does Frank say anything?
State College Police.
Sure.
I, you know, with the, with the, informing the citizens committee, I, I have some concerns. I, you know, I mean, and my concern is this, that we contract the police, but they really don't have authority over the people in Harris Township, but I don't know how that's gonna work out.
And the other thing that concerns me is I've heard rumors through the rumor mill that we're gonna lose a bunch of good police officers, and perhaps the chief if that committee gets up and going. I, I guess my question is, or what I, what the comment I'm making there is, do we need to load our guns? Is it time we took a look and see what police services would cost if we did it alone, or if we, we hooked up with somebody else? Or, or do we need to have state police thing? And I, and I'm wondering if we should just get it out there so we have it, have it just in case. I, I, you know, I don't want to be in the position where we're losing police services and, and we, we have citizens at risk, and then we have to do something. And, so, that, that was just, that's just my concern after hearing, you know, what they want to do there. I do have some concerns of how that's gonna affect our police service. I know that, but I, I, that's what I'm saying. Should we, should we start looking at that to get some kind of look at what it would, so that, and, and the other side of the coin is if we do that study, and it's, somebody says, it's gonna cost you twenty million dollars, well, obviously, that's not something we would have a, a thing to do, but I, I, I think I can see that being, uh... Loading our guns.
Part of starting your own police force is, the state will give you all sorts of money for three, two or three years, and boom, that's yours.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm saying.
I have a suspicion that having our own police force would be expensive.
It's very expensive.
Well, it's not expensive, it's a political nightmare.
Yes, that too.
And I'm not sure that I want to have coverage from the Pennsylvania State Police, because that's not the kind of coverage that our residents expect.
We have one cruiser that covers Penn Valley from Woodward to...
Well, that's why I suggested college, 'cause they're in the, they're gonna be in the same boat we're in, you know, and, and that's why I didn't know if we'd want to talk to the two of us at some point.
That's, that's what's being suggested here, and I'm, I'm fine with that, having a conversation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I, I can't even do anything, but I'm thinking the conversation might not be a bad idea.
I think including Tom King and Tom in the discussion.
Tom King is retiring at the end of this month.
Again.
Yeah.
That's right, he is.
Yeah. Well, you know, I always, about, I don't know, a bunch of years ago, I went to Ferguson Township, I think it was Chief Connor, wasn't it, Chief Connor? And I don't know who, who did this, but he come back, and we talked about, between Ferguson and Col, and, and the Borough, and his comment was that, that we, we could go, Ferguson wants to join their police force, in other words, we would be part of the police force, not a contractor. And who knows what that would, that would, that would go down. But he mentioned, you know, there are, there are statistics out there and studies out there, where they're at, that tells what a town of our, of our size, what we can expect, what service money-wise, and maybe, that would help us, maybe with College Township, do the same thing. 'Cause I, I happen to think that, that almost five-hundred thousand dollars is, is, is quite a burden, for every time I give a report, there's less and less cram in Harris Township. So, I, and less and less everything. So, I, I don't know the answer to that. My personal opinion is, we don't need a, we'd need very little patrol time, we'd need otherwise, but that's, but I think I'd like to find out, so whoever studies this thing, what, what does a town our size with our, with our needs, what, what should we expect? And, and I don't, I know the Boroughs, they sit there and say, by, by contract, they set it up, so, well, we're gonna send there many, so many times, we're gonna get so many calls for services. Is, is that the standard or not? I don't know.
Who in DCED covers municipal piece of it, you know?
I don't know, off the top of my head.
No, I don't know. Is Rick Valero from Lock Haven?
Rick's the, uh, the local government guy, so he would know. Rick's the guy.
Well, Rick, Rick could direct us who...
Yeah.
In DCED does, does police contract.
Would you like me to have a conversation with Mr. Brumbaugh and to see if his counsel, his counsel might be interested?
You know, guys, I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, getting ready, you know, I, I don't know that we need to do anything, but I think at some time, we, we need to know what we're looking at, if, in case something does happen. You know?
Yeah, the options are...
What, what are our options and costs? Because obviously, I think we're cost-restrictive on some things.
Yeah, well, and let's talk, because if College Township went in on that study, I think, having worked in two places that had police departments, they're very expensive, and they're personnel nightmares.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we don't pay fifty thousand dollars for a study.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to pay that one.
And the equipment's terribly expensive.
If we can get the, if we can get the information through that, that's even all the...
Media systems are terribly expensive. Okay, so, proceed softly.
Okay.
Approval of vouchers, someone?
I move to approve the vouchers in the amount of two-hundred-eight thousand eight-hundred thirty-two dollars and forty cents.
Second?
You turned, you must have turned your voucher in, I saw.
I second. I second.
You have a motion and a second?
Oh, my God.
You can, you'll vote this one. All in favor, say the vote, saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Committee reports, folks. The executive committee, we set the agenda for the general form, and actually, this is the hybrid general form, and my, my first attempt at doing a hybrid.
So far, unless they change the rules.
Well, it, I think it worked pretty well. It, it takes a while to see all the pictures in front, and then all of a sudden, that full-size screen of the person that talks, so it's a learning curve. I think it went pretty well.
Don't sit under the microphone.
Okay, Public Services, we...
Don't sit under the microphone.
We spent most of the time talking about the establishment of the Lucy Committee, which is the consolidation of transportation, land use, and, and public services, and did, did talk a little bit about the solar accessory project. And getting into discussion of housing choice, affordable housing. Planning people are having trouble putting their head around exactly what that means. So, that'll be a while till we get a, a good answer in terms of what kind of gap analysis they need to do to determine affordable housing. So, it'll be an ongoing...
I think about affordable housing, if people don't live in it, pay for it.
Yeah. Solar, solar power, we're meeting this Wednesday. Two contractors were interviewed, and we will find out Wednesday who they are. I don't know, I can't say much about it.
Danny, one little addition there to the, to the Public Service Environmental.
Okay.
Uh, in TLU, on there, there was, they wanted us to, to come back with a utility scale solar perspective, what our comments were on it, but I, I did ask Mark, and I talked to him about it, with our new zoning, we will not see, they're gonna be under the, the ag commercial, which means they can only develop ten percent as a solar field. So, we're not gonna see our farms be four-hundred acres of solar fields. So, they will fall, that commercial utility solar will fall under our ag commercial. So, there, there are, we do have in that new ordinance, we will be covered under that, 'cause I asked Mark about that at the meeting.
Okay.
So, the rest of it's, what, what are they gonna put on for regulations? But I, unless you guys want, Danny or I, to say something else, or come up with any other thing, if you have any other comments, that's kind of where I'm coming with it.
That's how it's going, so...
You're long-winded enough, you'll take it.
Okay. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Mossland?
Okay, we just met last Wednesday. A few things on the agenda. We approved a budget for the Employee Recognition Committee, for Employee Relations Committee for eight-hundred, eight thousand five hundred nine dollars, and the Employee Relations Activities for Employee Wellness Programs for ten thousand six hundred eighty dollars. And we also approved a motion to expand the health insurance, whatever is that acronym there? Yeah, I lost it. The acronym is H-I-P-R, Health Insurance Rebate Program, Program. Well, it's for, basically, the COG will give up to twenty-five dollars half of the approved exercise plan program, like a membership for a gym and stuff, for employees, but that was now expanded to employees' families, because the benefit is to keep your employees healthy, so the insurance stays low since we're self-insured.
If they, if they take advantage of a gym, they get, if they don't...
If they take advantage, well, no, if they get a membership, they can, the, the COG will reimburse up to half of the membership for up to twenty-five dollars a month. They have to pay the other half themselves, so there is the incentive. If you're not going, they're not gonna pay. They're not gonna do it, and, you know, it seems to be pretty popular, and this is all paid for out of the, out of the insurance rebate we get every year. The COG does really well on, on the insurance cost.
That was a big number in terms of insurance return.
Yes, we, the COG is traditionally done very well.
That would be a topic of discussion. We paid it, and we're getting, we're just getting it back.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting a reimbursement from our, from our expected, from our expected fees, anyway. The other thing that's kind of interesting, the, the, the Parks Maintenance, Parks Department's had a problem getting seasonal maintenance people, a real problem. I mean, they got supervisors on mowers, and the, there was a proposal to, they need usually twenty a year, that's the, been the thing. There was a proposal that Pam brought forward to eliminate five of those positions and hire one full-time, year-round position instead, so you have somebody available all the time. The problem is, these five positions, they're eliminated, and they're usually part-time. The, the people that do the seasonal work usually only want to do it part-time anyway. So, basically, she thinks that this would be a good trade-off, so it's a, it's a zero-sum game, you know? Basically, the cost of those five seasonals that would, would pay for, for the salary and benefits for a full-time person, year-round.
He would do the work that these people do.
What's that?
He would do the work that these seasonal people do.
Yeah, that's, all, everybody's doing work that the seasonal people do. It's, they're, they're having trouble, you know, you get seasonal people... It's, um, they're, they're having trouble, you know, you've got seasonal people, you've got to, you have to have people that know what's going on. They're driving trucks with trailers and have to operate this equipment because most of the seasonals are doing the mowing.
Does that full-time position require a different piece of equipment to do the same amount of work or are we...
No, it'll, it'll be using the same thing, but my guess is they're going to, you know, they'll end up paying a person overtime here and there, who knows? I mean, they're paying, they're probably paying a lot of overtime this, this season. I, I'm, I'm impressed that, uh, you know, the, the grass and the weeds isn't too tall in, uh, in Harpside Park right behind my house. I hear them mowing regularly, they're doing a great job, but they're really stretching thin. So we approved that. The other one thing is, uh, preliminary, um, RFP draft to, for us to look at, uh, not to vote on yet, for, uh, a, uh, classification and compensation study for the entire cog. It's been a long time since that happened, the Wage and Benefits Survey, basically.
Program plan.
Yes, and, uh, so we, we just, uh, looked at the RFP and, uh, gave, gave some comments. Everybody thinks it's pretty good and so then we'll come back, um, and we'll approve that, uh, a future meeting, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Graham, you're on for Finance, Climate Action Sustainability, Folds of the Heritage Museum. You have three, um, three members.
The finance, as you heard, will meet on the nineteenth, I believe it is. And then we'll, we'll go over the program, we'll start to discuss the program plan. And then after we discuss that, then we'll, we'll, we'll find, uh, it's, it's, it's just a discussion. There'll be, well, what about this? We'll, we'll go through the same thing you did right here, except each participant will have their own decisions. Whichever is the most popular will go through. I will say this, I looked at all those things that they want to spend and I don't see how we're going to spend it all this year. We'll see what happens.
We're going to have trouble spending it?
Yeah, well, getting, well, getting, getting it in the budget.
Oh, okay.
Getting it in the budget. My guess is that, uh, if they're going to keep that budget at two and three and four, two or three percent, it's going to be, uh, especially with...
You have to increase it a little.
Increase, yeah, so, uh, finally, and you'll hear more about that.
Are we going to have to look at the, we used to have the, the three percent limit or is that something?
No, that's out the window.
I know it is, but is that something we might have to look at again?
Well, what, what we'll do is, well, what we have, it's, it's, it is, it's been very conservative. If they, they've always gone two and three and four percent, one percent. And what, 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 if we told them three percent, they gave us two, but it was sort of a bookkeeping nightmare. It's in there somewhere, you find it.
Yeah.
So, but we're doing pretty well at that. It's a twenty-eight million dollar budget and it's, it's overwhelming for five guys to, six, six guys or five guys to sit down and say, well, it was just working out, but we'll, we'll see.
What about Climate Action?
Climate Action, we met today. The, we're developing, Pam is developing, her crew is developing Center Region Climate Action Adaptation Plan. Uh, this is, this is only one, uh, this is the first of, uh, this is, this is Implement, uh, A out of B, C, D, E and F. So this is, this is A and it will be B, C, D and F to be added on to this, then we can start discussing it. We had some little bit of discussion today, mostly theoretical, mostly, uh, just, just plain how we like this, we don't like this, nothing's been determined. One thing that I did bring up and I hope that, I think it was going to be incorporated, one thing we can control around here is, is air pollution. And it does fit in with this. It's even though it's climate action and what you do to adapt, is air pollution is important. Not only, not only everywhere, not only here in the United States, but across the world, air pollution is very important. So we'll see, it's going to be a long time. One thing I looked at, I said, oh, it's approved by Senator's Council, I must have missed that vote, but it, it should be, to be approved by Senator's Council. So you'll see more of it. It, it'll go on for quite a while, it'll be a lot of discussion. Uh, there's no, there's no goal set yet. We, my guess is there's going to be a lot of goals and aren't going to be able to be kept, but we'll discuss that as, as time goes on. Pam has done a, a very hard, very good job and very, worked very hard on it. And she's using resources from all over the country, so that, the, the Heritage Museum, uh, they're having a little bit of an arts craft thing down there. When in August? Hell, this weekend maybe.
No.
No, when is it?
I think it's in...
It's a football game.
No, it's not a football game. It's the end of August. We'll put it out in the evening.
Yeah, we'll put it out, it's, it's an arts and crafts type thing. And then we're going to be featured on PCN.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I think that's twenty-second, twenty-third, so take that out. They were down there filmed for about half a day or... It'd be a nice little, little burb on PCN. That's it.
These are nice things.
PCN's great, I love it. I'm always amazed at how many industries are in, in Pennsylvania and what they are.
Oh, it fascinates me.
We're just, we're, that's made in Pennsylvania.
Wow. Okay, you, uh, Harden, uh, Transportation, we talked about that one.
Yep.
Facility and the...
MBO did not meet.
Okay.
Facilities Committee did not meet and the Area Connector Pell Study has not come out yet.
Okay, good. And Mr. Lord, you have the last.
I didn't want to talk too much.
Um, to wrap up. Yeah. Public Safety, um, last time Public Safety met, it was basically a review of the, um, where each of the different agencies are and how their planning is going. So nothing there, everything that was there is in these documents here. Parks Capital and Center Region Parks Authority had their joint meeting. We heard about the Milburgh Marsh Boardwalk feasibility study. I looked at different materials for the pilings, for the support structure and for the actual walkway. I, they had four recommendations. When I read through it and stuff, the one that seemed most reasonable to me or the wisest to me turned out to be the one that the feasibility study committee selected as well. We're looking at, hold on to these hats here, we're looking at two million dollars for the boardwalk and another nine hundred thousand dollars for some associated improvements to trails and bridges there. So it's not going to be cheap. Uh, we had a quick review of Whitehall Road Regional Park and what it's doing. And it got interesting then. Our chair asked us to review a letter that Ferguson Township has put forth to send to, um, Penn State, asking them for pedestrian easement on that, uh, Mustard Gap Greenway selection. That is a piece of land between Whitehall Road Regional Park and Mustard Gap itself. Penn State's not going to give an easement.
Penn State is not?
No.
I think that they're already putting something in there. They already have plans.
But they're not going to give an easement.
No, I don't think they...
Oh, easement?
Yeah, they're not going to give, they're not, Penn State's not in the habit of giving away valuable assets. And furthermore, the letter we were asked to support has not been written. And so we ended up something of a compromise, saying that we would support a letter to Penn State, tell them how much we valued that asset. So, next item that came up, Division of Responsibilities for Maintenance and Operation in the various parks and what's being done by municipalities and what's being done by Center Region and such like that. And of course, that's an authority responsibility, not a Parks Capital Committee responsibility. And furthermore, there was some agreement between a couple of us that we really need to get this governance thing straightened out first before we talk about divisions of responsibility. And, and so that kind of, one, it didn't be long before, it didn't be long in front of Parks Capital. And two, it's premature because we need to deal with the governance. Third item that came on was, uh, review the regional park master plan and how, how, how those, review how we open up and redo the regional park master plans. Again, a responsibility of authority, not Parks Capital Committee. And the authority is, um, working in that direction, but they're, you know, the agency's pretty busy right now, just getting summer going was, was a big, big step for them. I'll mention on all three of these items, well, I'm on both committees, the authority and the Parks Capital Committee. I was the only member from the authority that spoke, basically. Kathy Mattson spoke once when there was a comment. One of the comments was, we need to meet more often so that there's better line of communication between the, uh, Parks Capital Committee, between the municipalities and the authority. And I commented and Kathy backed that, that, um, each municipality has a representative on the authority, so there's no reason why we shouldn't have good communications. Other than that, the authority just sat there like, you're wasting our time.
My que, I have a question.
Sure.
The Parks, Parks Capital, uh, or the Center Region Parks, Regional Parks Authority, the authority, it's not a traditional authority like, like U A J A or the Water Authority. It's, it's different. And, and my question is, the way it's intermingled here, should, should we look at making it a traditional authority? I hate authorities, but...
The difference, the difference is, they're a traditional authority in every way but one, and that is they don't have, the, the Sewer Authority charges fees. Airport Authority charges fees.
Water Authority.
They don't, the Water Authority charges fees. Parks Authority do not have that income stream, so they're dependent upon support from municipalities. That's the primary difference. Other than that, they, they, they are an authority in every sense of, they're governed by...
Can they charge fees?
Well, the agency does, but they're not, they're not funding.
They weren't set up that way, but if they're a recognized authority.
If they did, they would totally separate from our contribution. Yeah. And I, I will add that, that our Chair of Parks Capital opined that, um, really Parks Capital Committee should disappear and it should become the Parks Committee with total oversight over. And I come back to, this is why we need to deal with this governance issue, because it's a mess. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Remind me who's the Chair of that, uh, meeting? It'd be a certain supervisor from Ferguson?
Yes, it's Ferguson Township. That, that means we've come sadly to the end of the agenda.
I, I have one thing that I would be remiss in. Every time a small, a family of kids comes walking through the parklet behind my house, my wife says to me, when are we getting our new swings?
Oh, thank you.
And, and I keep getting that comment, so I'm asking, when are we getting our new swings?
Tell your lovely bride that what I'm hoping to do is, because we're going to have an installer come up to put the playground equipment in at Knitney View.
Okay.
So I'm going to see, I have to reach out to Dave Ely at Ely Associates if we can have the hauler do the swings and we have a spinnerama that needs to go into, uh, Phasor Park as well.
Okay.
When they're up here.
So I can talk, because every time a little kid walks down there.
And it should be this fall because the, uh, we paid for the park equipment up at Knitney View, so that's, that's moving along swimmingly.
Is that the park, is that the old store you said?
There's, uh, swings in the...
Parts of it, yeah. We have a motion to adjourn, folks. Anyone want to second that?
Yeah, sure, sir.
Okay. By the movement of feet. All right.
Can't you get up?
I'll kick your neck and say I feel...
What happened? Oh, 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 that's right, forgot.